We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is four o'clock. This is the May 7th Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting. First item on the agenda is approval of this afternoon's agenda.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Are there items that we can combine into items? Into the same item as we consider them on the agenda? I'm thinking. A4, item A4 and B1 and a few of the other ones, Noel?
The site plan amendment and the final plat, both for MMS consultants? I think is what he's talking about. Is that okay? Okay, we'll combine those then.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
As amended? Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Next, approval of minutes of the regular meeting of April 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, we'll have the financial report.
This is Anderson with staff. This is the financial report through March 31st, 2019, which puts us at 75% of the year. Looking down through there, we are at about 76% of our expense overall and 54% of our revenue at this point. A large part of the revenue that would still be coming would be property sales for the city of Waterloo, which there is some in the progress, so we should be in good shape for this part of the year.
Any questions?
Noel, will those property sales occur before the end of the fiscal year then?
That'd be the goal, yeah.
Okay.
Before June 30th.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move we adopt, or I move we accept the March 2019 financial report as presented.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item is a time for oral presentations. This is an opportunity for anybody in attendance in the audience to get up and speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. If there's anybody who would like to speak on a non-agenda item, please come forward and state your name and address. Okay. Seeing none, we will go on to new business. First item is a request by the city of Waterloo to rezone 20.88 acres of land from A1 Agricultural District to M2P Planned Industrial District located northwest of 4455 Remington Road. It is now 405. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial map, and notification map and overview map were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on April 19th, 2019." Do we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We will first have the staff report.
This is Dornell with staff. The applicant is requesting to rezone a recently annexed property from A1 Agricultural District to M2P Planned Industrial District to match surrounding zoning. The request would not appear to have a negative impact surrounding areas primarily industrial. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic movements in the area. The site is served by Elk Run Road, which is a minor arterial. The area's own A1 Agricultural District is zoned as such since being annexed to the city in 2018. Surrounding land uses and their zoning is as follows. To the north, agricultural zoned AL Agricultural Limited District by Blackhawk County, A1 Agricultural District and M2P Planned Industrial District. To the south, agricultural, the Union Pacific Railroad and Commercial zoned M2P Planned Industrial District. To the east is Commercial zoned M2P Planned Industrial District and a quarry zoned AL Agricultural Limited District. To the west is Commercial zoned M2P Planned Industrial District. The area consists of industrial uses built between 1952 and 2009. There is a 24-inch sewer line that runs from Remington Road, from 4455 Remington Road and before turning south about halfway down Remington Road. To the south, to the property to be rezoned, there is also 18 to 24-inch storm sewer located in Remington Road along with 4-inch drain tiles on the east side of Remington Road. The future land use map designates this area as industrial. However, the property was really recently annexed into the city and the future, so it's not included in the future land use map. The applicant is requesting to rezone 20.88 acres from A1 Agricultural District to M2P Planned Industrial District. The Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission recommended the land be annexed to the city of Waterloo on June 5th, 2018. City Council approving the annex on July 30th, 2018. When land is annexed into the city, it's automatically zoned A1 Agricultural District. Therefore, it needs to be rezoned to match the zoning of the surrounding area. BMC Aggregates located to the northeast of the site is not opposed to the rezon, but wants staff to know that when potential businesses are looking at the site, to be aware of what BMC does at their facility. Therefore, staff recommends the request of the city of Waterloo to request 20.88 acres from A1 Agricultural District to M2P Planned Industrial District be approved for the following reasons. Request in conformance with the comprehensive land use map and future land use area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact of traffic conditions. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area and with the conditions met below. The request would not appear to have would appear to have a positive impact providing more industrial development options on sites already served by multiple infrastructures.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff? Okay. Is there anybody that would like to address this agenda item? Okay.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to rezone the 20.88 acres of land from A1 Agricultural District to M2P Planned Industrial District located northwest of the 4455 Remington Road. With the, so long as the request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area, it does not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. And the request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area with the conditions being met below. And the request appears to have a positive impact on the area of providing more industrial development options on a site already served by multiple infrastructures.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay. The time is now 4:10 and this is a request by DGOG Waterloo LLC, I'll shorten that, for a site plan amendment to the CP Planned Commercial District for the construction of a retail store located near the intersection of Martin Luther King Jr. Drive and Idaho Street. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial map, notification map, and overview map were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on April 19th, 2019." Do we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We will have the staff report.
Okay, Dollar General is the applicant. The applicant is requesting to construct a new 9,100 square foot Dollar General retail building located northeast of the corner of MLK Drive and Idaho Street intersection. The request to construct the Dollar General will not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding areas would appear to be compatible with nearby commercial residential development in the area. Proposed site plan would not appear to have a negative impact upon vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions in the area. The site is served by Martin Luther King Drive, which is a minor arterial on Idaho Street, which is a collector. The area in question has been zoned CP Planned Commercial District since July 27th, 2009, when the land was rezoned from R3RP Planned Multiple Residence District. Surrounding areas and their zoning designations. In the north, vacant land and trees zoned CP Planned Commercial District, C1 Neighborhood Commercial District and R2 1-2 Family Residence District. To the south is vacant land, Martin Luther King Jr. Trailhead and Trail and Martin Luther King Drive and zoned R3RP Planned Multiple Residence District. To the east is vacant land, trees and homes and zoned R2 1-2 Family Residence District. To the west is vacant land and homes and zoned R2 1-2 Family Residence District and R3RP Planned Multiple Residence District. Due to existing topography and vegetation, no buffers will be required for the site. Will be necessary that a storm detention plan is submitted as well as SWPP to the engineering department for review and approval. The proposed request would not appear to have a negative impact upon drainage in the area if proper storm water detention techniques are put in place. The proposed storm water detention area is located just north of the Dollar General building. The eastern side of the proposed parcel is located in the 500-year and 100-year floodplain as indicated by FEMA, but the proposed store location is not located within the 100-year floodplain. There is a 15-inch sewer line and 548 by 50 drainage culverts just north of the project site. There's also an 8-inch water main along the west side of Idaho Street, which with an existing stub underneath Idaho Street that connects directly to the project site. In addition, there's an 8-inch water main along the north side of Willow Street as well. The applicant is requesting to construct a new 9,100 square foot Dollar General building. The area in question is zoned CP Planned Commercial District, which is intended and designed to provide a means for residential development compatible, commercial on tracks of land on a unit basis, allowing greater flexibility and diversification of land uses. Zoning orange requires one space for every 250 square feet of retail floor space. This equates to 29 parking spaces for the 7,159 square feet of retail space. The site plan does show 30 parking spaces and therefore does meet the requirements. Site plan designates landscape areas to the north and south of the site as well. As indicated on the site plan, the landscape area shall consist of sod, trebs, overstorey trees, and mulch. Parking areas are also set back more than five feet from the property line. A plat has been submitted for this area as part of a separate request. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for a site plan amendment to the CP Planned Commercial District be approved for the following reasons. Request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. Request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area. Request would bring new economic development opportunities in the area and with the following conditions that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, and setbacks.
This is Flynn. On the public, on the, I guess, what is it, in the request, you list West High School is located 3.36 miles to the southwest. That's East High, I'm assuming?
Yeah, I think I may have listed that incorrectly.
Yeah, so just making sure. And the curb cut will be off of Idaho?
Yes.
Two curb cuts. Two curb cuts on Idaho.
And will they have, sorry, will they have a free standing sign also?
I don't think one was submitted with their court request.
Right.
But yeah, usually they do have a wall sign.
Thank you.
Is the applicant or someone on behalf of the applicant here? Okay, seeing none. Is there anybody that would like to address this particular agenda item? If so, please come forward and give your name and address.
I just have a question.
Please give your name and address.
Mike Cook, 3511 Sage Road. I own a little bit of property out there, so I just wanted to find out, is that store located behind that park that's there on the corner? And will the front of the building be facing west or will, okay. Then I think I know where you're at. Between Willow then and Martin Luther King is where you're at. Okay.
Yeah, it's between, yeah, it's.
So you can, if you can see that screen over there, the kind of the bottom part, we've triangled out where the trailhead is, the little shelter and all that. So that'll be just off the screen at the very bottom. So we are, we are keeping that as city property to have access to the trail system. But the building layout itself would actually, the main part of the building, main doors would face to the south.
They keep moving it, yeah.
It's a trick, Mike.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. And the park itself isn't on there?
The park is just to the, yeah, it's just off the screen to the bottom there.
The bottom of the page.
The entry is off the light. Corner of MLK, you're right on Idaho. And just, just looks like it starts kind of in the middle of Willow and all the way down to the back of that park then.
Correct, yeah, correct. Yep.
All right.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this agenda item? Okay. Do we have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion that someone wants to present to discuss?
Just a quick question, what's the timeline on that plat typically? Because it's already been submitted.
I don't think there's any plating, yeah.
Oh, okay.
There's a vacate, there's a vacate request for, I think for an easement, but the plat is already approved.
Probably approved.
Okay.
There might have been a mistake in the staff report about plating.
Gotcha.
Well, I think it's great for that area to have that store there. There's not a lot of opportunity to quick jump in and buy things, so I think it's an awesome opportunity for that area. So with that said, I would make a recommendation that the request for site plan amendment in the CP Planned Commercial District be approved for the following reasons. The request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact around the surrounding area. The request would bring new economic development opportunities in the area. And with the following condition, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, drainage setbacks, et cetera.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The time is now 4:19. And a hearing is scheduled at this time for a request by Northland Products Company for a site plan amendment to the R2 CZ 1 and 2 Family Conditional Zoning District for the construction of a parking lot located across from 924/1004 Rainbow Drive. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial map, notification map, and overview map were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on April 19th, 2019." Do we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Do we have a copy of that list?
I...
Who it was mailed to? Yes, it should be included in the packet.
I didn't see it.
I don't, I don't see that. Oh, it's in my packet, sorry. Would you like to see the list?
Yes, please.
I didn't realize I had things you guys didn't.
Privileged.
There's a map, there's a map to show the properties that it was mailed to and then the second page is the list of mailing.
Does this, does this item start on page 38 within the packet?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, we do have it.
It's in our packet.
Yeah.
Yes.
You have reading glasses.
Western with the staff.
Western with the staff, I didn't know you were ready, okay. This is Western with staff. The development could impact the neighborhood. The industrial uses are currently north of Rainbow Drive and east of the railroad tracks. The location of the office used south of Rainbow Drive and east of the railroad tracks will need careful design and landscaping to ensure that it provides a smooth transition from industrial and commercial uses to residential uses to the south of Rainbow Drive. The area is served by Rainbow Drive, a minor arterial, and Hannah Boulevard, a local street. The applicant's site plan shows two curb cuts off Rainbow Drive, which will need engineering department approval. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic movements in the area. Relationship to the recreational trail plan, there is a dirt trail behind Northland Oil that connects to paved trails from Amesboro Avenue to Green Hill Road and provides access to trails around Georgewith Memorial State Park. There are no sidewalks present around the site and there are no plans to add them with this request. There is existing sidewalk on the north side of Rainbow Drive. However, it should be considered to require sidewalk along Hannah Boulevard as a part of this request. The property in question is zone R2 CZ Conditional Zoning and has been zoned as such since May 6, 2002. The following land uses are as follows. To the north, M1 Light Industrial District, Northland Products Company and a city of Waterloo park area. To the east, M1 Light Industrial District, Northland Oil Company, Bowers Masonry, Sam Anis and Company. To the south, R2 1-2 Family Residence District. To the west, R2 1-2 Family Residence District, Residential Homes and Robbie's Sales and Small Engine Repair Shop. The area is a mix of residential and industrial uses, both being built in the late 30s to the late 1960s. Landscaping will be required along the west and south sides to soften the visual effect of the property lot, including a solid fence to screen the parking lot from the adjacent residential uses. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on drainage in the area. The applicant will have to submit a drainage plan for review by the engineering department. All utilities serve the site. Existing sanitary sewer lies underneath Rainbow Drive with a 10-inch diameter line. Storm sewer also serves the area. The future land use map designates this area as low-density residential. The request is not in conformance with the conference plan, but the site was previously rezoned to allow for the commercial use of an office building and parking lot. The property in question was rezoned from R2 1-2 Family Residence District to R2 CZ Conditional Zoning in 2002 for the purpose of building a new 5,000-square-foot office building and a 24-stall parking lot. The applicant now wants to build a portion of the parking lot consisting of eight stalls. The remaining stalls will be built in the future as well as the office building. The parking lot will be required to be screened along the west and south sides of the parking lot from the residential properties. Although the future land use map shows this area as low-density residential, staff feels that this is an example of a mixed-use area that an office use could provide a smooth transition between the industrial and residential uses of property of properly designed and landscape. Therefore, staff would recommend approval of the request by Northland Products Company for a site plan amendment to the R2 CZ 1-2 Family Conditional Zoning District for the construction of a parking lot across from the, across from 924 to 1,004 Rainbow Drive be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon pedestrian or vehicular traffic conditions in the area. The area is mixed-use and an office use could provide a smooth transition between the industrial and residential uses. And subject to that, the property is screened along the west and south property lines by a six-foot solid fence. And lastly, that a final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, drainage, et cetera, except as approved by the Board of Adjustment. Any questions for staff? Also, there is a letter that was submitted by nearby residents listing a multitude of concerns. And the applicant representative is here too to answer any questions.
Mr. Western, just a little quick question, Trost. If they were to change the proposed parking lot in the future, I'm assuming they have to come back from their site plan amendment visits, it's like the same process we're going through tonight?
Correct.
Okay.
This is Hall. There's mention in here in the portion about complete streets that it should be considered to require sidewalk along Hannah, but is not a condition of the approval. Can you talk a little bit, add a little insight as to why that's included in one place but not included in the final recommendation?
Well, I believe the staff report is written to suggest that that's a good idea. However, I think we're leaving it to the planning commission as to whether or not they want to add that as a condition.
And would that sidewalk connect to anything currently?
No.
No. Okay.
So, right, this is Commissioner Wilber. So right now, the plan is only for the parking lot, but the office could come later?
Correct. And to be more specific, the original parking lot shown is for 24 stalls. They're only proposing to build eight.
Okay. Any other questions right now for staff?
I have just a question as far as, this is Flynn, that the, I know Rainbow Drive does have a no-truck sign. Why would there not be one on Hannah? That is a smaller street than Rainbow Drive.
You know, I can't give you a technical reason, however, common sense would dictate that it's a local street and why would you drive a semi down a local street? that it's a local street, and why would you drive a semi down a local street?
So, could the residents...
That's probably why it's not listed.
So, could the residents in this area go to the council and request no-truck sign on that road?
I believe the correct way to do it is to call Sandy Greco and Traffic and request that, and then there's a process that you have to fill out paperwork, and then it'll go to council for a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, sorry.
Oh, I had a question. This is Commissioner Do Not. Should we have more discussion about mandating a sidewalk between Hannah and, along Hannah Boulevard as what Tavis was talking about earlier?
Do you want to hear from that, hear from the applicant first, and then?
Well, nobody else, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Hold on one moment. Is the applicant here, or somebody on behalf of the applicant that would like to speak?
If you were here, if there's a question...
Why don't you come up and introduce yourself, and we'll see if commissioners have questions.
Zach is with me. My name is Garrett McShane, and I'm the operations manager at Northland Products, and Zach is our distribution warehouse manager. And we're here to answer any questions or if there's any, any concerns over this project. There was a letter submitted, or there was some concerns with the neighbors, neighboring properties. If anyone has any questions.
This is Flynn. Have you, as an entity promoting this project, had a meeting with the neighbors and to discuss what this project would encompass?
We have not had an opportunity to speak with the neighbors, neighboring properties.
The primary intent of the parking lot is to get a lot of our employee parking off of Hannah and onto our own property. Right now, we have any, probably four to six cars that park right on Hannah at the corner. The goal is to get those off the property there and eliminate blocking robies, small engine repair spot, as well as the property directly to the south of that lot.
So, you're saying four to six are right there in Hannah, and you're only doing this for eight lots? What would be the reasoning for that?
Because the rest of our parking is, we've got available parking right in front of the building on the north side of Rainbow, so this just gets those off of there.
Okay.
And just makes it a little bit of a cleaner intersection there.
Okay. Are there other questions for the applicant?
Is there an urgency to this project? Just wondering if we were to look at the lane of the month, would it delay you too far?
We would prefer that it be done sooner more than, than later because of the, we're parking on the grass right now across the street, and it causes also erosion concern as well.
Yeah, it helps, and it's hard to see from the picture, but it helps clean up. That's a pretty muddy corner there because we do park vehicles in there. It helps clean that up, get some landscaping in there, and get all those vehicles off of the grass and mud and onto a piece of concrete.
Well, I guess, this is Commissioner Do Not. I guess my question would have been directed towards staff or not necessarily toward the applicant about a planning study or a traffic study to answer at least some of these, some of these questions in the letter from the community members who put out the letter. And so, what say, what did the staff say to that?
This is Anderson with staff. I mean, from what I'm reading in the, the letter, it looks like the majority of their concerns are with the semis coming in and out, not with the parking lot requested hand. I guess, you know, just from a preliminary standpoint, getting the cars into a proper parking lot and off the street or near the curbs might help the semi-turning movements in the area, but again, it looks like the majority of their concerns are about the semi-movements, which is not the request at hand.
Okay.
And we can answer some of those questions as well. I mean, we're prepared to, if you have any.
I didn't have any additional questions, other than what Tavis had already put out about, about the sidewalk concerns with the complete streets.
Well, this is Flynn, as far as, is it asphalt or concrete?
Concrete.
Concrete. And it will, will it be curbed all the way around?
Yes. It only has one curb cut as well.
Well, it has two, actually. There's an existing...
But for this parking lot, there's a new curb cut that will go in.
Yes, there's an existing one.
This is Schrader with staff. Regarding the sidewalk, yeah, we had that comment added under the complete streets analysis, just to recognize there's a lack of sidewalk in this area. There is sidewalk on the north side of Rainbow Drive, not on the south side of Rainbow Drive along this property or on any of the adjacent properties, and there's no sidewalk along Hannah Boulevard. Generally, when a proposed development, if we'd make them put in sidewalk, doesn't connect to anything, then we're a little hesitant to require it as a condition. But we did mention it in there just to kind of get the thought about it going. It could, you know, make that connection to the sidewalk on the north side of Rainbow Drive via, you know, a crossing of Rainbow Drive, but currently, there is no additional sidewalk south of Hannah, and it's, you know, unclear, you know, where that would fall out from a priority standpoint in getting additional sidewalk on. So, we just kind of wanted to mention it, but we weren't necessarily sure, you know, we weren't suggesting it be a condition, we just wanted discussion on it.
I would add, though, that it's never going to be connected if we never have this conversation by adding sidewalks, right? So, I'll be honest with you, I think this is a perfect opportunity for, for Northland Oil to show some leadership in, in the neighborhood. It looks like there's some other issues that need to be addressed, and if that means adding a sidewalk to this project, this should be the catalyst for future sidewalks to connect to Rainbow Drive. This idea that we can't do sidewalks because we haven't done sidewalks only ensures that we never do sidewalks. And I've been on this commission for too long and had this conversation too many times to continue to hear, we don't have sidewalks, so we can't require them. We've got to start at some point, and I'm only interested in starting now.
This is Flynn. Regarding the fencing, you had in the request that had mentioned you'd have solid fencing. Have you considered to meet the, I guess, to be neighborly, as far as some of the requests, as far as fencing on Hannah Boulevard?
Yes, we will meet any fencing requirements needed, and we want to make it a smooth aesthetic transition from the residential to commercial. We want to make it look nicer and be safe as well. We're, we're all about that as well.
Thank you.
Are there other questions for the applicants? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this agenda item? If so, please come forward and state your name and address.
My name's Kay Suberl, and I live at one thirty-two Hannah Boulevard, and I've lived there my whole life, and we don't have an objection to them building a parking lot because it would be a lot better than what we have now. They have a big mud lot that they park on, and they also park on Hannah Boulevard on both sides, so we can't back out of our driveways. They didn't mention, they also park in the city park, Castle Bluffs, that's just, I don't know which direction it is, but if you're looking at Northland Oil, it's directly added, it's to the left. There's a little park there that has an entrance that takes you down into the trails. And our neighborhood is, there's a lot of walkers that go down to the trails and a lot of bikers come from quite a ways, and, and I think the sidewalk would be beneficial because, to be honest, it's, at times, it can be quite dangerous crossing Rainbow Drive because you never know where the semis are going to be. And one of you mentioned that the semis would never go down in the neighborhood because it's small streets, blah, blah, blah. Well, they go down into our neighborhoods all the time, and we've had times when they've come up as much as like two blocks, got caught in the trees, and then had to back all the way back down, which is extremely dangerous. And that is why, even though some of these points might, might not seem relevant to the, to the parking, it shows why we have no trust in anything they do because they just take advantage of the neighborhood. And if this shows that they're expanding, another thing that we worry about is that we have train traffic at night that comes through there, and I'm like a block away from it, and every one of my neighbors can hear it. It wakes everybody up at night. I don't know how many nights it is in a row, or you know what nights of the week, but it's not fair that they bring trains through our nice residential neighborhood in the middle of the night. There has to be something they can do to get the trains to come during the day. That would be bad enough, but at night, it's, it's not fair when you have to go to work and you can't sleep because the trains are coming through. And we have discussed some of these things with, with Northland, but usually, we kind of get, sometimes we get flippant replies, you know, you know, it's, they just don't answer our questions. And, and you answered the question about no parking, and I wrote that lady's name down to contact. They do also do, I don't know what you call it, but they do, they take their semis sometimes and bring them down into Hannah Boulevard and then back them up, and it blocks off the road. And they also, in the morning, when, one of my neighbors, when she wants to go to work in Cedar Falls, she comes down to Hannah, down to Rainbow, wants to turn left, but she can't see to turn because there's semis over here parking on Rainbow Drive. They use it as a parking lot, Rainbow Drive. And I, I think you covered everything we wanted about the City of Waterloo zoning ordinance, chapter twenty-five, the rules for parking lots, because it would be nice if we had something that, it would look nice. We are really concerned, though, that eventually, they're going to drive their semis from, from eight fifty-seven, eight fifty-seven Rainbow Drive, which is the old Whittaker Foods. They have semis parked in there, well, the trailer's three deep, and they, we're concerned that they're going to come out and come onto that parking area because, I mean, they violated city rules and stuff for parking anyway in the past, so I, I don't trust not to have more problems. And the privacy fence would be wonderful because the view from some of my neighbors' houses is solid trailers, and they have a, what do you call, a chain link fence up there, but that doesn't block out the view, and the view is really bad. And like I said, I grew up in the neighborhood, it was never like this with the previous owners. It's just becoming ugly, and, and the view is bad all the way up Rainbow Drive, too, or excuse me, Joy Drive, that, through the two-hundred-block of Joy Drive, they have nothing to view but trailers. And I think Mrs. Flynn said that about good neighbor. A good neighbor, if you're going to have something crappy on your lawn, you block it out, you know? You don't let everybody else have to look at it. And the last thing that I have here is that there's some danger in their parking lot at eight fifty-seven Rainbow. At times, there are multiple trailers with the back ends open and empty oil barrels in them. I don't think that's safe for children, for, one, for exposure to oil, and two, for getting locked in these trailers. Little chain link fence isn't going to keep any kid from crawling over the top of it. We all were kids once, we all know we crawled over things. Let me just make sure I got everything. One of our, I think that when you brought up about meeting with the residents, I think we should be giving more time because, to meet with them, because we would like guarantees what's going to be there, and we would like guarantees from them that they're going to meet their burden. I think that's all I have, but the, the meeting with them would be great. I think it could iron out a lot of the problems.
Thank you.
I had one question, just clarification. And you said early in your address or your speech here, where did you want the sidewalk installed at, at Rainbow and?
On Hannah Boulevard up to Rainbow.
Okay.
So, I, I can't, I, I never have been able to tell east and west. I guess that would, that would be east, I think, on the east side of Hannah. I'm not, but I'm not good at directions.
Thank you.
I've got a question for the applicant, actually.
And you also can, if you want to respond to any of her...
Yeah, I would like to have a chance to...
Yep.
Real quick question regarding the sidewalk.
Yes.
Are you all opposed to the sidewalk? Are you open to the idea of including the sidewalk in the plan and the project?
We're open to a sidewalk. It would be very important, though, I think, to consider the safety of the pedestrians that would be using it, because I know as, as, I've worked there for better part of fourteen years, and we have a concern, too, for safety of pedestrians and traffic on that Rainbow at times, and we've actually had speed conditioning or officers there to control it, but there are cars that get very fast down that road. So, a crossing would have to, you know, be well-engineered, I think, for safety of the pedestrians, but we would, we're not opposed to it.
If I may, Jamie Cadet's the city engineer. The issues, I want to caution everybody with the issues for sidewalk along Hannah Boulevard. ADA requirements, if you want to send traffic or send pedestrians across Rainbow, ADA requirements do not allow you to use a driveway, which is what you would have on the north side of Rainbow, as an ADA ramp, which means there are going to be issues with putting sidewalk just on Hannah. You would have to then run it down along Rainbow either east or west for however long to get it away from Northland's driveways. So, please keep that in mind as you're moving ahead with requiring sidewalks in this particular area. It's not just as simple as saying, "Put it on Hannah Boulevard." There may be other requirements that'll be, need to go along with it.
That makes sense, I just didn't know that.
And did you want to...
Yes, I'd like to make some clarifications on certain things. Our, our employees that are drivers, we have our own drivers, and then we, they're hired outside drivers. Then in addition to that traffic, there are other industries down east that have semi-traffic as well, and we, we aren't able to control the, the neighboring properties, businesses, and their semi-drivers. We do, however, all of our drivers, none of our drivers go up Hannah, or they would be in consequences for violating our rules, our company rules. So, they're, they're trained as such, and they don't do that, and they're aware of the no-truck sign that's on Rainbow. However, there are certain other businesses, their drivers will drive right by our place, but they didn't, they didn't come from our place. I know that's sometimes a concern for us as well. And anytime I see a driver that's one of ours, it's going, I stop them, or someone would, would stop them out front. They're instructed not to do that, so we do not encourage that. We do not store any oil at eight fifty-seven. We're not, there's empty containers in that set, and they're all clean, empty containers, just for clarification's sake. As far as the concern of parking semis in this new parking lot, that, that should not be a concern. It's going to be our employee vehicles, our employees that work there, and we'll get our vehicles off the streets. In addition to, there was a, it was brought up about the, the park to the north. We, none of our employees park there. We trained on that. It's been almost two years ago not to park in that parking lot, and there are none of them parking in that parking lot as of now. That's something we, we watch closely, Zach and I. So, they park in the Hannah mainly, with overflow's Hannah and in the area where we're proposing the parking lot. I think that covers about everything. I think that covers about everything on our end. Again, we want, we want to be good neighbors, and we, we, for the most part, we keep our facilities in good condition, I think you can agree if you drive by. And we just want to address this muddy area that's sort of a nicer for us as well as our neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have.
So this is Flynn, so you would not have a problem, again, with the fencing?
Not at all.
With it being not chain link, but, you know?
Yeah, we, we, yeah, a privacy fence or even landscaping or trees or whatever would make a, a nice transition, we would be open to doing any of that.
Is there anybody else that wants to address this agenda item? Thank you.
Thank you.
And, excuse me, did you guys get a copy of this letter?
Sure.
Okay.
I would, yeah, I would hope that they would get it.
My name's Lisa Skubel, I'm with, I'm the Vice President of Economic Development, as you know, for Grohl's Cedar Valley, and I've been listening to the conversation back and forth, and understand the residents' concern about semi-trucks in their neighborhood. But this issue is really about allowing them to take property that their employees, overflow parking, that their employees are experiencing, and going through the mud. And they seem to be very willing to work with the requirements that the city would like to have them do, such as the sidewalks and landscaping, as well as the privacy fence. So from our standpoint, we can't see why this project would be delayed, because they seem to be very willing to work with the city and the area residents. So I'd encourage you to follow staff recommendations. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address this agenda item?
I'd make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion to discuss?
What are we, motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the request by Northland Products for a site plan amendment to the R2 CZ 1 and 2 family conditional zoning districts for the construction of a parking lot located across from 924 to 1004 Rainbow Drive, with the subjects that, with the conditions that the property is screened along west and south property lines by a six-foot solid fence, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, drainage, et cetera, except as approved by the Board of Adjustment, and three, that the installation of a sidewalk along Hannah Boulevard that connects to the Rainbow Drive existing park, existing sidewalk.
There isn't an existing sidewalk.
There is an existing sidewalk.
On the other side is Rainbow Drive.
So they'd have to wrap it. Right, so what Jamie was, right, so what Jamie was saying was that he didn't want it to just, that, he didn't want the sidewalk to just go out Hannah and then connect to a drive, a driveway cut.
Right, right.
So then they would have to wrap that around?
To the east further.
To, to, to Rainbow, and then allow for that crossing.
Along the south side.
Where there's not a driveway on the north side.
Yep.
Where there's just a curb currently.
Correct, yeah, correct.
Okay, is there a second so we can discuss?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
So you're intending for the applicant to cover the costs of all of that?
Yeah. Yep, so there's a whole residential, I mean, neighborhoods, a lot of us have had to pay every, what, five years when they come by with the, with the paint and, you know, tap our sidewalks. But having, have, if we're, if we're a Blue Zones community, if we actually embrace this concept of complete streets, we have to actually start. And that means making some of these types of investments, and it's actually good for the neighborhood to have that connectivity.
This is Wilbur, I would agree with that, and then add that there's also the plan, if we remember, for a future office building. So in addition to the parking, which even the applicant has said they're concerned for their own employees, assuming there could potentially even be more employees if they build that office in the future, so residents, employees, and the like. Anybody else?
The sidewalk proceeds, is this true, the sidewalk proceeds to the west through their drive, they have an extra wide driveway, is that, is that correct, across that staff? Staff, is there a driveway across that whole north side of Rainbow Drive? Is there an extra wide driveway across that whole thing on the north side of Rainbow Drive?
In front of the, if you look at the picture of the building to the west, there's employee parking, and there is city sidewalk in approach up to that parking that you cross. But basically from the intersection of Hannah and Rainbow, straight across from there, there is city sidewalk there.
Okay.
As you go east, that is truck entrance, further east is more sidewalk.
The park entrance is to the west, is that correct?
Yep.
So, but I think what, I think what Tavis is getting at is, if the sidewalk is included, there's a way to get across, maybe around to the north, on the south side of Rainbow in front of your parking lot, hugging along Rainbow Drive, and then get to a point that you can go north across to the curb, where you can see non-drive, non-north side driveway area.
For the ADA compliance.
But there's a way for them to get back to the west, then, to that park from that location, is that correct?
Correct.
Sidewalk-wise, is that correct, staff?
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer, one of the concerns that will need to be looked at, if you were going to go east along Rainbow to, towards the railroad tracks.
Right.
To go across to the north side, then, to tie into that sidewalk, that would be considered a mid-block crossing, and there are some traffic issues that our traffic engineer will need to take a look at, because we typically do not encourage mid-block crossings because drivers are not used to seeing that. Again, there's no guarantees, I'm not saying you can or can't, but it's something that would need to be looked at. I just cannot guarantee you that they would be able to do that at this time. The other thing to keep in mind is, the corner, the north, maybe the northwest corner of their property, we will probably require an easement from Northland in order to put sidewalk on city right-of-way. Currently, there, we will not be able to put sidewalk in that, on that corner. So again, keep those ideas in mind. I'm not saying we can't or can't work through these, but there may be, we get down the road, that we can't do it.
Well, and this is Flynn, I, I have a bit of a problem with someone coming for a request to build a parking lot for their employees, and that parking lot could get held up by ADA for, we're requiring them to do a sidewalk. And secondly, with the traffic there, both the resident and the applicant are saying that the traffic flies through that area, so then you're going to add another barrier there by having a mid-block crossing for a sidewalk, if that's even possible. So I guess I would have, I could not approve it if it's going to hold up their parking lot project based on ADA curb cuts, all of that, because I don't think it's fair for the applicant personally, that just is trying to improve the area with the concrete sidewalk. I agree with sidewalks, I agree with what you're saying, Tavis, but I'm just saying that they're talking, that there's an urgency to this, and, or they'd like it to be urgent, I guess, their employees are parking in mud, and we're going to tell them, well, only if you get through ADA, you get through this, you get through curb cuts, you get through a traffic study, can you do your parking lot.
And this is Tros, and the risk, I guess the risk would be that, I guess the applicant could decide, we're not going to put in a parking lot. I'm assuming that's an option.
I'll, I'll be honest here, and this is, quite frankly, this is for staff, that we've had this conversation for years about sidewalks, and we still don't have a plan. We, there, there still doesn't seem to be a priority here. If sidewalks were a true priority, these things would have been ironed out and would have been a part of the conversation, a part of this packet that we get every month. And so it's frustrating that we've got to sit here and try to weigh all of this while we've asked and asked and asked about, for a policy here and some directive. Either we, either we're for sidewalks or we're not. Either we're for, either we're for complete streets or we're not, but this tippy-toeing along the line is not helpful, as we're trying to make a decision on not just this one project, not just this one parking lot. And yes, it might delay it for one month, but we're also talking about the potential of maybe not touch this section for another 20 years. It is incredibly frustrating.
This is Commissioner Wilber, is there something that we can do to allow the parking lot to go forward and maybe give additional time in saying that this, the sidewalk doesn't have to be completed for another, I don't know, I'm just throwing this out here, trying to brainstorm, like a year or so, so that they can continue to iron this out? And meanwhile, because this does seem to come up continually in our discussions, maybe as a commission, we can think about putting in a request for, issuing some kind of statement on behalf of our commission collectively to say, we would like this to be, I don't know, something more concrete.
I think, this is Holdem, and I think Tavis is right in that there needs to be some sort of policy.
Just some clarity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if we could not require sidewalks for the parking lot, but require them to put sidewalks all around the property when they build the office building.
Then we could go forward with a traffic study, we could go forward with the ADA, you know, I mean, I, I just think it's not fair, they're trying to make it a better improvement to the neighborhood as far as not having the employees park on the street by doing this. And I think if we're trying to, you know, control that, they can't do that until they make a parking lot based on the stipulations we give them, I just don't think it's fair.
So then I would, just a procedural matter, I need to make a recommendation to remove, to amend the?
Motion.
The motion, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Just remove condition number three.
Yep, so, yeah, formally make the amendment, the motion to amend the motion of the installation of the sidewalk along Hannah.
And I, I think we could, I mean, I'm not telling you what to do, but we could add with, with the condition that it is looked into, future, you know, studies are done and the viability of this sidewalk through the ADA traffic studies with the plan, plan proposed new building, or, you know, something so that we don't let it die, because I agree 100%, we're never going to have a good sidewalk system if we're not committed to the sidewalk system.
This is Tros, as Tavis suggested, there needs to be some policy possibly set as to how this is, the sidewalk issues are dealt with for a Blue Zones community, and we're supposed to be looking at these sidewalks, having staff opinion on those things as each one of these comes up, rather than tiptoeing around each one. But based on that, you know, we, if we don't have our ducks in a row, how do we penalize, you know, applicant who comes in? And I think that's what you're saying, too. So I guess my, my proposal also would be that we make a conditional, that there's any additional improvement to the property, that our policy as a, as a city entity needs to be, that we need to be making recommendations in regard to what the city sidewalk requirements are going to be for that development that's tied to any further improvements to the site. So are the owners aware of that ahead of time?
No, we would have that, since it's a conditional zoning, correct, that when they do further improvements, that it would come back and hopefully by that point?
That's true.
The commission would have some guidance here.
No, that, that's good, I mean, I, I agree with both sides, but I just don't think it's fair to penalize the applicant when we don't know what we're doing.
So being as the amendment you made to the motion, Tavis, and being conditional zoning, that requirement's not going to be needed, but I think as a policy of the city, it needs to be implemented somehow that the, the owners are made aware of, the applicants are made aware of sidewalk requirements.
Yep.
Here's my contribution.
This is Duner. I just want to, I have an open question about if we don't stick, oh, sorry, if we don't stick to the requirement that Tavis was describing about the sidewalks, does complete streets really mean anything when they make recommendations if we don't follow through with the sidewalks? You know, if they have that type of recommendation?
This is Anderson with staff. So we do look at staff and make recommendations, and as you'll note in the staff report, we, we noted the complete streets concern, but we did not recommend it. The City of Waterloo looks at complete streets as a part of all of its new street reconstructions, all, all its new street designs and new developments. We do not currently have an infill sidewalk policy in place, it's been discussed, but there's been nothing approved on that, so there is no specific policy to go by to go back and address the very question that we're talking about today of, you know, you can put in this sidewalk, but it's a sidewalk to nowhere, and if there's no policy to continue constructing more sidewalk along Hannah to the south and all that, then we have not pushed the envelope, I guess, in terms of requiring it on these infill sites until we get that new, until we get a sidewalk infill policy in place, then it'll probably start to be a little bit more easier to move ahead, but that has not come to date. A lot of communities have them, a lot of communities have done them different ways where the cities have paid for the infill policy, infill sidewalks, to go back in to fill in gaps, they've started with smaller gaps, they've gone to larger gaps, they prioritized them around schools for smaller children to walk. Others have done assessment programs against their residents to make them pay, pay for the sidewalks. And so there's a lot of things still to iron out with that, and we continue to work on that.
This is Schrader with staff, and I just wanted to add that the Complete Streets Advisory Committee, which I am a member on, also agrees on development of a sidewalk infill policy and has been working closely with the engineering department. In fact, there was, there's been a couple of meetings just within the last couple of weeks on that, trying to continue to move forward towards development of an infill policy. It's not there yet, I'm not exactly sure how long it's going to take that we'd have a policy that would be ready for a vote, but it is being looked at.
I'll second the motion with the amendment.
Any further discussion?
Just, I would just welcome that Northland would meet with the residents there and just try to iron out those things, I think it's respectful of their concerns, too, so I appreciate that.
Anything further? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you, everyone. Okay, the time is 5:06, and a hearing is scheduled at this time for a request by MMS Consultants for a site plan amendment to the M2P Planned Industrial District for the construction of a 2004, 20 square feet warehouse, office, and maintenance buildings located east of 1994 Newell Street. At this time, we would receive in place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial map, notification map, and overview map were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on April 19th, 2019." Could we have a motion to receive and place this on file?
Subpo.
Second.
Sorry.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Isn't this the one we were going to combine with the?
Yes, we will have the, the staff report on the final plat request as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just, just starting off with staff, you did get a packet tonight that showed an updated staff report, although I already noticed a correction I need to make into it, and also some additional drawings that the, the applicant has submitted within the last couple of days. So the request is by MMS Consultants on behalf of the City of Waterloo for a site plan amendment to the M2P Plan Industrial District for a construction of 4,000, 400,000, 16,678 square feet of warehouse, office, and maintenance buildings located east of 1994 Newell Street. The applicant's requesting a site plan amendment in order to construct warehouse, office, and maintenance buildings with 204,160 square feet in the initial phase, initial phase, and 212,518 square feet in the future phases. The request would not appear to have a negative impact surrounding neighborhood or land use area, it's been sold industrial since 1995. Request would not appear to have a negative impact, regular pedestrian movements in the area, the area is served by Martin Luther King Drive to the south and Newell Streets in north, both streets are classified as minor arterials. As part of the project, Newell Street will be As part of the project, Newell Street will be improved east of the plat, east of the site amendment site. Approximately 100 trucks a day would be using the facility heading eastbound to the John Deere, John Deere factory. Only about six trucks a day would be coming west from the company and the company has been told that the preferred route would be MLK Drive, Northeast Drive to Newell Street and to avoid truck traffic using Newell Street west of the site. Martin Luther King Drive recreational trail is located on the south of the proposed, um, site plan, um, along the north side of the roadway. The area in question has been zoned M2P Planned Industrial District and has, um, since been rezoned from A1 Agricultural District in October 1995, surrounding land uses and zoning has followed to the north vacant land ground, um, so A1 Agricultural District to the south vacant development ground, so the M2P Planned Industrial District, to the east in the existing industrial development, so the M2P Planned Industrial District, and to the west, um, vacant ground and residential, um, with residential development further to the west, so the R2 102 Family Residence District. The area is comprised of agricultural land, industrial development has been, and industrial that's been constructed in the last few years, and City Heights Division developed in the 1940s and 1950s. A drainage plan would be need submitted to the engineering department. Uh, no area where the special, uh, where the site plan amendment is in the floodplain. Uh, parts of the plat are, I'll talk about that later. Uh, there's a 60-foot utility easement that extends from Martin Luther King Drive to Newell Street along the proposed driveway, which currently has a 24-inch sanitary sewer line and 36-inch storm sewer line. There's also water, uh, water line at the site. The future land use map does exist this areas industrial. The plat would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for the area. The applicant's requesting a site plan amendment to build a multi-phase facility with phase one showing 2,004, 160 square feet of warehouse, office, and maintenance buildings, um, in the northeast industrial park plat four. The site consists of, um, 187,500 square feet of warehouse attached to a 60, 326 square foot office addition and, um, a 10,194 square foot maintenance building. The site plan also shows 389,426, um, square feet of parking area and, um, 600,000 square feet of green space. Phase two would include, um, 62,518 additional square feet of warehouse space and additional parking. Phases three and four would each add 75,000 square footage to the site and additional parking. Uh, parking requirements include one space for every two employees for the warehouse, one space for, and per 300 square feet of office space, and one space per 500 square feet of maintenance. So site estimates a need for 78 parking spaces, but includes 141 parking spaces. Um, truck traffic would be using Newell Street east of the site. The applicant is proposing improvements to Newell, um, that will need to be discussed with the traffic, um, engineers, which is currently under discussion. This would be the fourth facility of the kind built by the company. Um, they also have two others in Iowa, um, one in Wisconsin, I believe, and one in South Carolina. Um, the company intends to build the office space first, and they plan, according to the applicant, is going to be a better quality building than typical warehouse-type office space. Um, a neighbor does express concerns about buffering between residential areas to the west and the proposed site plan, and wants to ensure the city keeps its agreement limiting truck traffic along Newell Street to the west side. A second neighbor called and requested that item be tabled, so could have more time to look over the proposal, make comments. The caller stated that they would like to see trucks enter and exit on MLK Drive instead of Newell. Um, noted that the, the community pressed for MLK to have its speed increase to 45 mile an hour to encourage truck traffic to use it instead of Newell. And, um, staff sees, um, is concerned about any proposal to put the driveway onto, um, Martin Luther King Junior Drive at this site. Um, it would require for the trucks turning westbound in acceleration lane, um, and it would cause that most of the traffic would be turning left across Martin Luther King Drive. In the long run, that would cause increased congestion in the area and possibly cause Martin Luther King Drive to have to have its speed limit reduced due to the amount of traffic and actually have the opposite effect of causing truck drivers on tight schedules to actually look for alternative routes including Newell. Staff is not supportive of tabling the request as neighbors have sufficient time before the planning commission to meet, to review the request, and also have sufficient time before it will go to the city council. Staff understands the issues with, um, you know, the people have with trucks on their Newell Avenue and, um, however, it is noted that staff did receive eight other calls from neighbors and, um, also from one of the golf courses, and, but once informed that all the trucks would be heading east except for a few number, and that they would be told not to use Newell, and the city is trying to keep track, truck traffic off of Newell That they were okay with the, okay with the request. Staff also understands that with Highway 63 currently being closed, probably trucks are detouring along Newell Street. However, Newell Street will, or Highway 63 will be reopening, um, sometime late in fall, which hopefully will improve the traffic conditions on Newell with fewer trucks taking that detour. Therefore, staff recommends that the request to, for a site plan amendment for the 4,000, 400,000, 16, 678 square feet of warehouse, office, and maintenance buildings be approved for the following reasons. Request would not appear to have a negative impact surrounding the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on pedestrian or traffic conditions in the surrounding area. Request is in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for the area, which designated as industrial development would appear to be, um, similar to adjacent development, industrial development in the area with the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, including but not limited parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera, and the applicant will need to work with the city traffic department to design roadway improvements to the section of Newell east of the site. And for the plat, um, as mentioned, the portion of the plat is in the, um, 100-year floodplain, approximately 25% of the eastern property is located with the, um, zone AE, 100-year floodplain as indicated by the, um, floodplain maps, panel number 0193F dated July 18th, 2011. This particular area is, appears to be for drainage channel, it would be undevelopable. Um, the final plat consists of three lots and three tracts of land containing a total of 61.03 acres of land, which is located east of 1994 Newell Street and between Newell Street and Martin Luther King Drive. The site is zoned M2P Planned Industrial District. So when a lot is developed, it will be necessary for new development, go through a site plan amendment process, which we're going through right now, and be approved by the planning program, zoning commission, and city council. The plat does not include setback lines, which are determined through the plan review. As lots develop, it will be necessary for each development to submit and execute an approved landscaping plan. There are three lots shown on the plat. Lot one is 27.49 acres, lot two is 7.17 acres, and lot three is 9.62 acres. Track A is 1.66 acres, track B is 11.50 acres, and track C is 3.59 acres. Um, the preliminary plot showed four lots originally, but has been reduced to three lots. The final plat shows legal description, property lines, dimensions, date, adjoining subdivisions, easements, proper lot sequence. Um, a deed of dedication and engineer's certificate survey will need to be included before the plat goes to city council. Also note that the tracks will be remained as, um, city pro, part of the city. Therefore, staff recommends a request for the final plat of North Industrial Park, plat number four, be approved for the following reasons. Request would not appear to have negative impacts around the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact pedestrian or traffic conditions within the surrounding area. The request would not be in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for the area, which designated it as industrial subdivision would be similar to similar nearby industrial subdivisions in the area with the following conditions, that the plat is updated with additional documents or submitted as required by the city before the request is sent to city council. And also note that the deed of dedication has, um, been drawn up by the attorneys and it's just being reviewed now, so we do have that.
Any questions for staff?
I have questions. Go ahead.
Tros here, I got a quick question on the, on the plat, um, lot three. I know we've talked about lot one and the fact that, uh, in the site plan amendment for lot one, which has been, which was talked about previous, just to this plat discussion, um, there was, there was talk about not accessing lot one off, you know, off of Martin Luther King, that we're going to keep it off of Newell due to the amount of truck traffic. Do we know what's going to happen with lot three eventually? Are there concerns with traffic off of lot three under Martin Luther King, because it looks like to me that's the only access to that site?
Right, yeah, it'd be primarily automobile related, I believe, but Jim Ellis from, the applicant is here, so he can give probably more details on that, because, you know, everything's in flux as far as the additional.
I just didn't know if staff had raised that concern, if that's the argument for lot one, is that the argument for lot three?
We just don't want to see 120 trucks a day turning-
Okay.
And especially, if you look at the site, uh, we took, actually, we were out there today, it is at the east, west, yeah, the east end of an S curve, so cars would be traveling 45 miles an hour and then suddenly encountering left-turning trucks. At the end of an S curve, which is dangerous.
Thank you, John.
Yep.
This is Flynn, and as, uh, resident of the city that travels that road at times too, I think obviously we're saying it's stated 45, but is that what people are going first, you know? And with the trucks on it, and if they're supposed to be there or not, this, the speed and the truck traffic is only as good as the enforcement, you know? And so we're saying it's only going 45. My concern is typically I think traffic goes faster than that there, and you're basing it on 50 mile an hour, you're saying, but I still think that that, that's dangerous with that amount of trucks.
And just a note, Noah and I were driving with some other people today on both streets and got passed while we were doing the speed limit, so.
Yeah.
Are there other questions for staff right now?
So here, I have a question for, uh, staff, I guess, I don't know. The second page, this is Do Not, by the way, the, the second page of the attachment here. So there's this whole section, and it would be page 50 in the packet, but it was updated with the attachment. So, um, there's this whole section about everybody has all these concerns, the neighbor expressed concerns about buffering between residential areas to the west, and it starts there. And then it talks about staff is not, or staff has concerns with proposal as it would require, um, 20, 120 trucks per day to turn left across Martin Luther. So that's the page I'm talking about.
Yeah.
If staff had all these concerns, why, why wasn't there time taken to flesh out the concerns?
Well, we did, I mean, that's it. We talked to the traffic department about this left turn and, um, the applicant is working with, um, traffic department to work on improvements. Um, there's talk about, traffic's not hap, they're talking about a three-way stop at the front of the site on Newell Street, a left-turn lane from Newell into the site, and acceleration lane from, for trucks turning right onto Newell. Um, I know Mr. Olson, I incorrectly told him there was talk of a right-turn lane. That was one thing that was talked about but dropped quickly. Um, but yeah, these concerns were taken, that's why, because they were brought in. Um, so yeah.
This is Schrader with staff. Just to be clear, staff is not concerned with the proposal as submitted by the applicant. Staff was expressing concerns with the counter-proposal from the resident to shift the traffic to Martin Luther King.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are there other questions for staff?
This is Holdman, I have a quick question for you, John.
Okay.
So if I'm reading this right and understanding what you said, it sounds like the vast majority of truck traffic will be going from this facility to the east.
Right, to the John Deere facility.
So it won't be going past-
Right, exactly.
Okay. But there's still maybe some of it.
There's like, they said about six trucks a day, is that right? Okay, so about six trucks a day, and they will be told that, you know, the preferred route is MLK to Northeast to Newell, so, I mean, you can't guarantee that somebody's not going to do Newell anyway, and, I mean, you can do all you can and-
Okay, thank you.
So six trucks per day, John, that are coming from John Deere to the east over to-
Well, they'd be coming from the facility going west out to the highways.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah.
I misunderstood, thank you.
No problem.
One quick question for staff. Is there any limitations on Newell right now as far as traffic requirements?
Um, the, no, there is a-
There are not. This is Anderson with staff. Uh, in the past, we have had a, uh, a Newell Street Truck Traffic Committee, um, to where we have, when, when the residents have called with growing concerns of if trucks start to use it, we've generally contacted the businesses out there and had them contact their employees and, and, um, other freelance truck drivers that post notices and all that that they are not to use Newell as a regular route to get back to the highway system.
What are the mechanisms available to the citizens? If there is, you know, if there's a committee that happens, uh, what, what steps can be taken? If it does become excessive, what, what are possible steps? Are they aware of those steps?
Um, it would be an embargo of the street.
And that requires?
City council action.
Okay.
After a traffic study. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
And then the enforcement of it after that.
And the enforcement, correct.
Great, is the applicant here and want to address the commission?
You're not the applicant.
Oh, we'll take the applicant first, and then, I promise, we'll give you a chance to talk.
Good evening, Ben Logston, I'm with Build a Suit. We are actually, um, building the facility for control.
And Jim Ellis with MMS Consultants, the engineer for the project. Do you have any questions? We'd be more than happy to answer them.
A quick question on the, on the truck traffic that is going from your, the proposed facility to the east, um, and so on, is that, um, drivers directly employed or is that contracted? How is that, how are those drivers made aware of the situations?
Most of them are, um, are not employed by control, they're, they're outside drivers, but they're, I think, um, most of the drivers are repeat, um, because they're driving between the facilities.
Okay.
So.
Other questions for applicant? Thank you, well, we may come back to you.
Question.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? Please come forward, state your name and address.
This is Ann, Ann Olson, 1972 Newell Street. I wanted to give you a little bit of history because I've been, been involved with this traffic committee and so forth. Um, Newell Street has been a, in a neighborhood area forever. Those neighborhoods have been over there plus 60 years, long before there was any industrial use on Newell Street. And over the years, as industry moved in, more and more trucks came, the neighborhoods and the neighborhood associations had been to city council three or four times requesting taking truck traffic off of Newell Street. The answer always was wait till they put in Martin Luther King Drive. And in fact, when they put in Martin Luther King Drive, they got federal funding in part to take traffic off of Newell Street and other residential areas. And then when Martin Luther King Drive was put in, the truck traffic did not decrease. So we came again to city council, and that's when we, uh, started the committee to talk about the truck traffic on Newell Street. At that time, a study was done of truck traffic. We had over 200 trucks per 24 hours going over Newell Street. So you can see why the residents and the neighborhood associations are so concerned about any talk at all about possibly increasing truck traffic on Newell Street. We've been promised over and over again that they were going to take it off and it was going to go to Martin Luther King Drive. And then when they, when this industrial park was, um, talked about, we came again to the city and said, "We're not against industry, we're not against this proposal. What we are against is any chance of all those trucks come-" What we are against is any chance of all those trucks coming on Newell Street, and we have been promised that they weren't going to come that way, and when, and we were told about this particular industrial park, that all truck traffic would go on Martin Luther King Drive and not on Newell Street. So I can understand why between Deere's and this place, they want to have truck traffic on Newell, and I think I probably can speak for a lot of the neighbors, we're not against that. We're against that possible right-hand turn, we're against six trucks, because six trucks multiplies to 20 trucks, to 50 trucks, and we've gone through this again and again, and we really want to be sure that those six trucks could go down Martin Luther and not, and we have asked from the beginning, Noel says that the next step would be embargo, we have asked from the beginning for 20-plus years for an embargo, and we have yet to get that embargo. So we're kind of reluctant to believe that the next step would be an embargo if this truck traffic continues, so that's our concern, and that's what we're worried about.
This is Commissioner Riddler, do you recall when that committee was last formed and that traffic study was?
It was Martin, it was Martin, it was John Roof's era as the mayor, so 15-plus years, and it worked, it worked well for a long time, but it's gradually been increasing as, as the businesses, the people that agreed and the businesses change hands, and then the new people don't know about that agreement, and so we've, it's gradually been increasing. But it had, it did work well for a long time.
So that 200 you're mentioning was back 15 years ago?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so no more recent study has been done on Newell?
No, not that I know of, it hasn't been. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Zolson, 1972 Newell Street, formerly 2020 Newell Road, when we moved there 50 years ago, the end of March 1969, just to give you one other historical point, we were the longtime resident in the area at this point. I was appointed to that committee by Mayor John Roof and worked with the five businesses that were then located, five industries, I should say, arise in support of industrial development, but vehemently opposed to increased truck traffic or the potential of it on Newell Street. John Deere, Eagle Tannery, IBP, Warren Trucking, and Cape Trucking. Representatives of those businesses and of the community, I being one, met to set up ways whereby truck traffic could be more friendly on MLK Junior Drive and decreased on Newell. MLK, as my wife's correctly stated, was built with funding applications saying, this is going to reduce truck traffic on residential streets out to the newly-developed northeast industrial site. Two proposals that I made personally to the committee, and then the committee brought to the city council and were approved, were the increase of the then 35 mile an hour speed limit from, on MLK from Idaho to Linden. You'll notice that's 45 now, that was our recommendation, to show the businesses were truck-friendly in the right corridor. The second proposal was to utilize right-of-way at where MLK quote-unquote dumps into Franklin, increase that right-turn lane to make it more truck-friendly where American Legion used to be. That was approved by city council and was implemented. We're now concerned, obviously, about potential increased truck traffic. There may be a concern, as one of the gentlemen said, turning left off MLK into the proposed developed area. But notice, there's no concern about the same turn coming off Newell if the trucks go MLK, northeast drive, west on Newell, and left across traffic into the proposed site. Six of one, half a dozen of another. I could facetiously say, well, that's why God invented stop-and-go lights, it's good enough at northeast drive, why not here into this site? And faithfully keep to the assurance that city council made us that we would do everything, they would do everything to reduce the potential for increased truck traffic on Newell Street. We're increasing at everyone's behest the residential development in the area. Not but eight, 10 years ago, the city council said yes to five Habitat for Humanity houses on Newell or an adjacent corner. Why would we now increase truck traffic? That seems to fly in the face. The concern I have is not so much the trucks going from this site to service John Deere, but product has to come to the warehouse, it's going to come on those larger trucks. And semis, just like electricity, will seek the shortest route to ground. That's going to be Newell into a right-turn lane into the developed area, not out to northeast site, north, back on Newell and down. We know that will happen, history has proved that to be correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Frost, my address is on your paper there, 1994 Newell. I live just right on the side of it. I've seen the project going from day one. I'm like, John, I've been out there for almost 50 years, the gravel road when I moved out there. All the promises we've received about the truck traffic has been a big baloney. I'm going to ask for you to think about, they said they're going to ask the semis not to come, or use the west route. Would that be more effective for them to ask the semi-drivers not to use that route than it is if you get off on Highway 63 onto Amesboro, go straight ahead to the overpass for 218, or you get off there on Amesboro, then onto Conger? Count how many times has a sign-up said, "No through truck traffic." It really hasn't affected them, I don't know if you ask them if that's more effective or not, I can't see where it would be. A couple of things you want to take into consideration, I think, I mean, I don't either have the authority for that, but I think there's some research has to be done. Newell Street was built for a street for people to get to John Deere's at the time, the northeast side. It was not built for semis, we were told, like Ann said, we're going to have the semi traffic. Martin Luther King Road, however, is built for semis. Newell Street has no place for, and there's a lot of people, I'll grant you, ride their bicycles to work out there, between IBP, Newell, the Tannery, et cetera. There's no place for them to ride except the road. There's no shoulders on that road. Martin Luther King has got a sidewalk, bicycle trail, I guess it is, the whole length. They've got huge shoulders on each side of the road, and trucks can pull off and, too wide. The ideal spot is to let them come out and go around, I know it's a little inconvenience, but on the other hand, it's a big convenience for us people living out there. That's about all I got to say about the truck, but the other thing I got to comment on is what about the water? As I see where they're proposing that, the building to go, they leveled that off, as you know, there's been a ton of money spent on that area out there, you know? They've got sewer and water and a street, I don't know if they're going to use the street that was graded in, it's never been paved, but the contractor that was leveling that off pulled out without completely leveling it off, because the area where you see on the picture there, where the building's going to go, is an area where they couldn't get in there and go do anything with because of the water. They ended up digging a ditch all around here to Martin Luther King, sits there with water running all the time. Something's going to be done, I know that you people can't, but you can recommend. I have nothing against them building this building there. Like my wife said, we'll get rid of the weeds for maybe a few, because that's all it's been, is weeds, and weeds and more weeds. And I got hay fever, and it don't help in a dang bit, I clean that up. But anyway, my wife said, we don't care, we want to build in there. And as far as the grading off, I told Mr. Ellis back here, him and I, he's up in my yard three, four times a week sometimes when there's grading, we've got to be pretty good friends, that's why you might have seen, he couldn't shake my hand when he seen I was here. But, as far as I'm concerned, grading that off, it didn't hurt my property a bit, because I'm sitting up on the hill now, I sit on a nice hill, and that, that part's graded good, I got no complaints. But we do have to worry about the water, because if you come out, drive out there just if you haven't, my yard, you'll see, I can't even mow it. Because when they graded that, a little history, they busted the field tile, drained that all out, and my place was part of that at one time when the Dolly Ginnells owned it. And now, as of yesterday, I didn't get the chance to tell Jimmy, as of yesterday, this has been going for three years, the city has agreed to tile it out. They've done about three different things there and nothing worked. And every time, they said they were going to do it, being a dumb old 12th grader, farm kid, I learned a long time ago, water don't run uphill. You got to go back to the original plan, but I did get that, I won that battle, I think. But they said, tell fact, Larry, what the city was out there this morning, said he bought the, bought the grass seed ready to seed it down, I said, well, we got to wait till we get the tile over here, how to tile it out, and they're busy right now, the farmers, and I understand that. But I have no problem with building in there and what they're going to build, but the other thing you got to think about, as I look at that map up there, evidently, there must be going to be some stuff built further to the east on the other side of that road that got graded in there, never been paved, but it's graded and sewer and water's in there. Be more traffic. Do I put the foot down now and say, go out to the south, use Martin Luther King like it was designed for? Then keep the traffic going that way. I've already shared my opinion with city councilmen, so it ain't news to them the way I feel about it, so thank you very much for your time.
Okay, next.
Lisa Scoobal, again with Girl Cedar Valley. Now, I understand and I trust the city officials will work with the residents' concerns, but when we talk about economic development, I can remember almost 25 years ago, when Waterloo Industrial Development Association assisted the city of Waterloo with acquiring the first portion of what we know today as Waterloo Northeast Industrial Park. And the intent was to create an industrial park that would do three things, expand businesses that could benefit from the robust utilities that are currently out there, provide large lots for industrial development, and support the existing supply chain. And over the last 25 years, I believe it's accomplished that, and it's also with the developments that happened over there over the time, those projects, the property tax they've paid have already gone back to the general fund, so that validates the success of it to the entire city of Waterloo. The future land use map does designate this area for industrial development, and it conforms with a comprehensive plan for this part of Waterloo. I understand road widening and the construction of a turn lane on Newell addresses concerns for truck traffic. I know that the city staff has looked at that for a long time, this is in a project that developed over a year, this has been something that they've looked at for a very long time. But on behalf of Girl Cedar Valley, I would encourage the P&amp;Z committee to support the request to build what will be a multi-phase project for an existing business totaling over 275,000 square feet of new construction in the city of Waterloo. We haven't seen such a large development in that part of town since Ferguson Enterprise built their facility back in 2005. Thank you.
Jerome Amos, Fourth Ward City Council member, I live at 119 Ricker Street, it's about a block off of Newell Street, and just wanted to let everyone know, including my constituents, that understand their frustrations with the truck traffic on Newell. I've received a call from Mr. Page a few times, we've been working with the tile issue, and I also received a call from Ed Dolan, Porky's Red Carpet, right there on Newell. What Ed Dolan is telling me is, is yes, there is truck traffic on Newell Street, he's not so much concerned about the commercial traffic during the day, but what is happening is, these trucks that are coming into town are actually utilizing Newell Street instead of following the no-truck traffic. So I have actually met with the mayor, so everyone knows, I've talked with Sandy Greco. Sandy is telling me that Newell Street has never been embargoed, it was actually designed for truck traffic, this is what she's telling me. My concern is, is that if we as a council don't address this issue, then there's going to be other problems, and that is one of the things that I, I talked with the mayor about this yesterday, him and I met, and he is fully aware of your concerns and your issues, and we will be addressing those things as far as that truck traffic on Newell. I don't know if it's even feasible for us to embargo Newell, but, I mean, we have to take into consideration these residents, from a standpoint of the economic development, those things, Lisa's exactly right, this is a big project, it's a good project for Waterloo, but I'm also concerned, like you all know and understand, the residents need to have a voice in this. And my, I guess, role and goal is going to be to either eliminate or reduce the amount of traffic that is on Newell Street during the nighttime, because I'm hearing that there's a lot of traffic actually going up Newell Street that shouldn't be there. So what that remedy will be, I'm not sure yet, I'm hoping the residents will have some patience so that we can get this worked out, because we're going to get it worked out, there's no doubt about it, because I live in that area also. But it's just a matter of, for me, this is important, their issues are important, so we have to, and I will be addressing these things, what you do is up to you, but I just want to let you know that, the mayor is aware of it, and we are going to be looking at it.
Is there anybody else?
May I have a closing comment, very brief? I served as, for five years, as chair of the Waterloo Neighborhood Economic Development Corporation, a nonprofit, boots-on-the-ground organization to help develop north Waterloo. I felt the term east Waterloo was quite pejorative, so I'm very definitely in support of industrial and business development, economic development. Let's, however, make use of MLK Junior Drive for the purpose for which it was intended, truck traffic and other traffic to northeast industrial site. Thank you.
Alita Alexander, I live in the 1900 block of Newell, and I guess the one thing, I want to say, you're, whatever you're saying, six trucks maybe, we already have trucks coming through there. I sit in my living room and I watch them go by, what, two years ago, one came through and must have been really tall and knocked down my cable wire that runs across the street. But the main thing I want to say is, right now, we have traffic from John Deere, Ryder, I don't know where else. I have to back into my driveway, because if I back out backwards to Newell Street, I've almost been hit several times. Right now, beyond 1900, his residence, when we had our neighborhood committee, I requested they put a blinking light to tell cars to slow down when they get to the residential area, they don't slow down. It's only 30 miles an hour in our neighborhood, and they mentioned bike traffic, we have people that walk on Newell, so I think traffic is already a problem without additional, you know, trucks coming in. It's a two-lane street, and there are certain times of day, I try to time myself as to when I leave home, because you sit there and you wait and wait, and people are flying. I can look down the street, and look this way, look that way, by the time I look again, there's a car flying over the hill, because there's a little incline from my house. But anyway, I think traffic is a problem without the addition, but that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
My name's Bill Bowers, 1977 Newell Street, been there 36 years. I worked for Zephyr Transport, run the shop and everything, and that last deal for the trucks on Newell Street, I was on some of that committee, and we talked to them, and they always lied to us, they said, oh, it's too far to go around the other brace, and I go, too far, too far. But I drove that personally, just like you would a semi, because I've worked on them for 50 years, and there's only two-tenths difference in mileage if you take Newell Street or you do Martin Luther King down to Franklin, Franklin to 63, 63 to John Deere's, or you come John Deere's 63, or to Sixth Street and take Martin Luther King all the way up. There's only two-tenths of a mile difference in it, and it doesn't take five minutes difference, period. period. And they told us that they couldn't embargo Newell Street, but they put the "no" through traffic. And if you're going from, you know, Ryder, or Gate D, or whatever it is out there, to downtown, that's through traffic, because you're going two different roads, you've got two major highways, railroad tracks and everything else, plus you go through school districts. So, I don't think the traffic is good going that direction. And yes, the traffic is bad at night now, going back and forth. It helped after we complained, but it's slowly been getting worse and worse. You're getting a lot of the drivers going out to Tysons, like, get Stevens, you get Trans Am, them people are coming from the west. Now, why are they coming from the west? You know, yeah, 63's closed, but they don't ever go downtown, anyway. But it does get pretty bad. Right on the front of my house, there's a manhole cover, that's right exactly where the semi wheels hit it. And it's like, two or three inches down, and it just keeps pounding on it when they go by that. So, you know, it makes a lot of noise, plus the house shakes and everything else when they go by. So, but I'm, I have nothing against a new building and all that stuff, industry and stuff like that, I mean, I was in that business for years, you know, so. Just try to keep the traffic off Newell Street. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wants to address this agenda item? Okay, we have a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we still have a quondary?
Yes.
Yeah.
I guess, obviously, I have heard from everyone here, and it's a quandary, because we want development, but we don't want the increased traffic on Newell Street. I don't know, Noel, this might be a question more for you, we have had a propensity to use traffic cameras for speeding in areas, can you use traffic cameras for enforcement of truck traffic?
That's a good question, I have to ask the police chiefs in charge of the cameras, I don't know if they can do that or not.
I mean, if indeed we embargoed Newell, or "no" through traffic, or if a citation could be issued, I think if a company got enough citations, they'd get the message that that's not the route they're supposed to take. But again, I don't know legalities to that or anything, but I'm just, we use it for speeding, so what if we put it 25 miles an hour on Newell? That would get everybody caught for speeding on Newell. You know, I mean, you know, just a thought, because obviously, nobody is against development, I don't believe at all, in this room, any of us are against development, but again, I have a hard time, in good conscience, you're telling me it might be six more trucks a day? I would think it might be more than that.
And this is Commissioner Wilber, this specific commission cannot place an embargo on Newell. We can make recommendations to the city council, so I just wanted to clarify that. We are hearing your concerns, but we only have a certain authority.
As far as, Noel, there, Mr. Olson's discussion too, as far as the turn, has that been addressed both ways, that he was indicating?
Jim, I don't know if you wanna talk about that, I know that MMS Consultants is looking at some improvements on to Newell to basically make it easier for trucks to turn into the site and go east to Deere, and they're working with our traffic engineer on the exact details of how that'll work.
Correct. We're, we have actually two multiple projects up in this area, all the way from the preliminary plating to the final plating, again, Jim Ellis, MMS Consultants. Also, the design of the site itself, and also the redesign and improvements to Newell. We specifically, one of the goals was to have a separated left turn lane for eastbound traffic coming into the site, so that we get the traffic out of the through lane for westbound traffic. We are currently working with Traffic Operations, looking at speed limit, because it is posted 45, so 50 mile per hour is typically a design speed, and we do understand that people sometimes have a little bit of a heavy foot. So, we are looking at that about the potential, and we still have to work through that with Traffic Operations. But one of the things is, there would be a designated left turn lane for westbound traffic. We did look at left turn lane out of the site, and we did eliminate that to not promote left turn traffic out of the site and back onto Newell Street. The goal of the project is to, the majority of the truck traffic is coming off of Elk Run Road, coming from the east to the facility, and from the facility to the tractor operations and back. So, this is a staging-type company, that's, it's more like just-in-time manufacturing-type processes, where the parts are there at the right moment. So, it's, the traffic is coming from the east to the facility, from the facility to John Deere and back, and then back out to 380 through Elk Run Heights. So, there's a limited amount of truck traffic. So, left turn traffic out of the site, we did not promote a left turn lane back into the residential neighborhood. We also don't have a right turn lane specifically for eastbound traffic coming out of the residential neighborhood toward the facility, because we don't, we're not promoting a lot of traffic coming from that direction. The other, the other thing that we're looking at too, is an acceleration lane specifically on Newell going to the east, so we keep truck traffic out of the through lane. If there is, if there is more, more speed in the vehicles that are already on Newell Street, we don't want to promote slower traffic, slowing down that traffic and have potential for rear-end accidents and such, so.
You're also flattening it out, too.
Yes, as part of the, we're working with the city for the improvements to Newell, which is a rise project, we'll be cutting down the hill on the western half to promote better site distance, or more site distance for traffic coming that direction, with the anticipation that we get trucks out there in the traffic, we don't want people coming over the hill too fast, and then within a couple hundred feet, there's a semi that's only going five miles an hour. So, the two things that we really tried to promote in the redesign of Newell is, like I say, the left turn lane into the site to bring those trucks out of the through lane, and an acceleration lane to the east for trucks to remain out of the through lane until they get up to speed and then can merge in safely. But we did not specifically put in, like I say, a left turn lane out of the facility, or a right turn lane into the facility, we were promoting not using Newell to the west for activities of this project, so.
You know, another thing that kinda correlates with this is, the city is a partner in a $700,000 study of the northeast industrial corridor. The city is partnering with the Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments, the city of Raymond, the city of Evansdale, the city of Elk Run Heights in Blackhawk County, and specifically to look at all of the truck traffic in this northeast part of the city, primarily the route coming from 380 up to the site, but it also takes into account where the trucks are leaving from the site and going, specifically if they're going to the north or to the west, and to promote the future improvements and designs in the county, if necessary, for a route to go up to the north, to the west, go on to 63 or to 218, again, without going back through the city, so. That's being finalized probably in the next month or so, all the findings and traffic data from that.
So, do you think putting an acceleration lane on Newell might encourage drivers to use it?
I think, like I say, the intent of the facility is to get back and forth from this facility to the tractor operations, and out to the highway, Highway 20 to the southeast. That's the main part of the, or the movement of parts and supplies. Off to the west is not the goal of this facility, it's a very high-tech facility, it's just not a warehouse, there's welding stations in here, there's CNC stations in here, there's some industry and some manufacturing going on at the same time, as well as keeping track of all the parts. So, like I say, that is the intent of the facility, it's more southeast, 20, 380, to the northeast site and back, so.
Got it, thank you.
I think I should say, too, the acceleration lane is more for safety, it's more for those slower vehicles coming out and not impeding that traffic. And like I say, we're working with Traffic Operations, we're throwing out different options, whether that intersection with the facility because of the high-left turn traffic in, whether that should be a 45 mile an hour speed limit, a 35 mile an hour speed limit, a three-way stop condition, you know, all those options are on the table, and we're working with them to make sure we put the right thing out there for the, for the area.
Thank you.
Is there a site plan that we can bring up, aerial photo of this area?
I'd like to look at the Martin Luther King, I guess what I'm wondering is, is I know there's always a reason for everything, but, and the professionals are making the decisions and making recommendations, and I'm just curious about the southwest corner of this property, I know there's some wetland designated right there, or something like that, it was part of this whole development, I don't know if that was something that was prerequisite, if that was something that was, had to be set up as part of the development of this property. But there's a straight section, the very southwest corner there, is there a reason why that could not be looked at as an option for that access on to Martin Luther King? Because based on what I'm hearing from some of the residents, and knowing why Martin Luther King was put in, potentially, it, being a lifelong resident, it sort of bothers me that we spent all this money and all this research on putting Martin Luther King in, and yet we're not, we're not gonna provide this traffic on to Martin Luther King with additional traffic signals and turn lanes and things like that, because that's what Martin Luther King was essentially for, from what I'm understanding. And if there's any way we can avoid putting additional load on Newell Street, I think that'd be advisable if we can possibly do that. So, I know things are being looked at, but I guess I'm just questioning, I see the curve, I see the straight section west of the curve, is there a reason that couldn't have been accessed as part of the study in laying out the site? I don't know if there's anybody that can answer that, I don't know if Mr. Ellis can answer that or not, but if there was a reason...
I could probably start, and they can join in for their exact site configuration. In terms of MLK being built, MLK was built to be a deer-to-deer facility and route, so basically going from the northeast site to downtown site. So, again, I think Mr. Olson noted a lot of the improvements that were put in the curving and the locations to 63 and all that back to deer, and so that is exactly what the route is being used for, is from deer to deer. This specific site plan before you today is for control to northeast deer movements. So, in terms of that being an efficient movement, it really wouldn't make a whole lot of sense to make them go down to MLK, go down through, overload the signalization at northeast drive in MLK, and go back up onto Newell over there, if all their movements are really from deer to control and back.
Okay. That being said, I guess my question is, is on the north side, now, there's a north access off of Newell Street, we're only trying to encourage right turns out of the site on to Newell, and we're only trying to encourage left turns off of Newell heading west into the site. Can't the access drive be such that it curves to the north and then curves to the east? So, if a truck is coming from the west, it's impossible for them to make a left turn, because they're gonna come completely over the curb and over a culvert, possibly. So, you have a very sharp, hard right turn to get into that site, so it's gonna encourage only right turns out of the site and only left turns into the site. Is that something that we could do that could possibly discourage left turn traffic at the same time as right turn traffic?
That's correct.
Jim, you can probably answer a little too, but traffic engineers generally don't like angled...
Sharp turns.
Sharp turns for traffic reasons of you're driving at an angle than when traffic's coming at you.
Yeah, I think, I think we have to look at the fact that it's still, right now, it's a 45 mile an hour roadway, and we're trying to make the facility, because we know we've got a lot of left turns, we're trying to make the facility safe for not only the traffic coming into the site, but also that 45 mile an hour speed that's going through the site. So, making sharp turns in, I mean, we can maybe look at that, but I guess I can't promise anything right now.
I guess my hope was that by having a sharp turn in, it's probably gonna discourage anybody from trying to turn into that location, and you can put a "no" right turn...
Right, right.
...access into that site.
Yeah, I mean, we can look at it, I could, I could see, I guess, too, the reason we're going to Newell is, it's more company request to go to Newell. Originally, when we put the plat together, there was a roadway planned to connect from Martin Luther King to Newell through the middle of the site. Since that time, the actual development has gotten much bigger in footprint, so it's actually overtaken what used to be the roadway corridor, so the water main and the sanitaries who are coming up through the middle are now gonna be through easement, there won't be a road through there, because like I say, the site has shifted farther to the east to get off the big hill, and then also the overall footprint is much wider than it was before. But the reason that we're going to Newell Street is specifically because of the proximity of the access to the tractor operations, and trying to make the shortest route between the two, because the company knows X number of dollars per foot of extra truck traffic, and they wanted the proximity to the tractor operations.
Jim, can you talk about the wetland in the southwest corner as well?
Oh, yeah, the wetland conservation area in the southwest corner, that was actually developed when Martin Luther King was put in, so that's a pre-existing condition in that southwest corner. When Martin Luther King went through, the bow in the road right there is due to the fact that it's going through a wetland, and they were, and they bowed the road up like that to try to minimize the impact of the roadway to the existing wetland. So, once the roadway went through, there was wetland in the southern side, and then in that southwest corner of the lot, or northwest corner, there was still some wetlands there, and those got incorporated into conservation parcels based on Martin Luther King original construction. And that's why it's seen right now as separate from the project, it's not due to this project, it was already pre-existing. So, coming through that area, we're trying not to impact wetlands as much as possible, we have to, you know, either mitigate those, if we do impact them, or try not to impact them, so coming off and putting an access on that corner, we'd be cutting right through the existing wetland that already exists, so.
And technically, our public hearing is closed, so the commissioners, if there's somebody that wants to make a motion at this point, or...
Did we have discussion, or did I miss?
No, there's not even a motion to discuss right now. And we have a...
Because I would like to make a comment if it's all right for discussion.
A what?
I would like to make a comment if it's okay for discussion.
We need to get a motion first.
Yeah, we need a motion first. You don't have to even vote for your motion.
We just need a motion to discuss.
Motion, a second, and discussion.
Yeah.
Anybody?
I'll give it a shot here. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the request by MMS Consultants. We have two things here, don't we? It's getting complicated, we got the site plan amendment, and we have the final plat. Do we vote on those as all as one motion, then?
Yeah.
Okay. That makes it even harder, let me try it here real quick.
Here's the site plan.
Yeah, I've got the, I've got the site plan amendment here, so I'm gonna get to the plat.
Page 60.
Oh, 1-1. That's the site, or is that the plat? That's the plat.
This is the site, and that's the plat.
Page 51.
Page 58 is the plat. Okay. I make a motion to approve the request by MMS Consultants on behalf of the city of Waterloo for the final plat of Northeast Industrial Park Number 4, a three-lot industrial subdivision located east of 1994 Newell Street. Dedication and engineer...
Dedication and engineer certificate of survey will need to be included before the plat is sent to the city council. The final plat of Northeast Industrial Park, plat number four, be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon pedestrian and traffic conditions within the surrounding area. The request is in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for the area which designated as industrial. The subdivision would appear to be similar to adjacent industrial subdivisions in the area and with the following conditions. The plat, number one, the plat is updated and additional documents are submitted as required by staff before the request is sent to city council. I'm not sure if I should be putting this in here on the motion. No. And then, part of that motion would also be recommend of approval of the request by MS consultants for, and we have the City of Waterloo for a site plan amendment to the M2P Plant Industrial District for the construction of a 416,678 square foot warehouse, office, and maintenance buildings located east of 1994 Newell Street. Be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon pedestrian and traffic conditions with the surrounding area. The request is in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for this area, which designate it as industrial. Development would appear to be similar to adjacent industrial development in the area and with the following conditions. One, the final site, site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including, without limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera. Two, the applicant worked with the city traffic department to design the roadway improvements to the section of Newell east of the site. And I would add, number three, that the entrance drive and exit drive out of the site be configured or looked at to be configured such that it only encourages eastbound traffic east of the site and westbound traffic up to the site and not beyond into further west past the site.
Second.
Okay. Now discussion.
Discussion. This is, Commissioner, do not, you know, in both of these items, it said that there would not be negative impact. And I think we've learned from the audience members who have spoken is that there, I don't know whether it's negative impact or whatever, but there is going to be, there is some impact, otherwise there wouldn't be anyone here talking about their concern. So I'm not against development in the area, and I'm not against having a facility be developed here and put in, put in this place. But those concerns need to be addressed that were brought up here by, by the audience members, and we need to take that into account before we go headlong into developing a project here on the site. So that's my two cents, I guess.
I put the motion forth so we could have the discussion a little bit more. Like I said, I think everybody understands that east of the site, not necessarily a large problem for most of the community members. Obviously, that's the most convenient route for the business to get their truck traffic over to their, to their clients. And that makes perfect sense. The, the main concern is what happens west of that, and are we contributing more to that? You know, we all know that six can turn into 12, can turn into 30, can turn into 60, and you know, our, our embargoes may happen, they may not happen, but if there's a, if there's a way that can be looked at, considered, and revisited, what happens with the entrance and exit out of that site to only encourage travel to the east and up to the site from, from the east going west? That'd be, that'd be my hope that that would happen. And I don't know how we can, how we can get through that process of doing that, but that'd be helpful.
I do appreciate that part of the motion, that it, it doesn't say it has to, but at least give it serious consideration. I understand that engineers don't like these hard angles. I also understand that neighborhoods don't like truck, truck traffic. And so it's, it's worth an exploration. It doesn't say that it can't happen if it can't be achieved, but it is worth further consideration and, and to me, it sort of makes sense.
One thing I think we could do, and we, our traffic is truly eastbound, and the, really the appeal of the site, like Jim said, is because we can get to Newell and we have a, you know, time is of the essence when we're moving containers back and forth.
Absolutely.
But we could certainly post a no-left turn for trucks sign at our entrance to discourage our trucks. It's, it's hard to make truck drivers, but posting signs certainly, and if there was some, some sort of traffic later, I think we would be fine with that. We really want to go eastbound. Ninety, over 90% of our trucks are going east. And so some sort of posting, when Jim and the city finalize the traffic control, we're fine with that. If there's a no, you know, no left turn out of our drive, I'm not sure how you configure that functionally, but I think we'd be okay with that. The route, I think, as somebody else said, the route down into the east is, is a fairly easy maneuver for trucks and isn't a lot longer. I think they've done some time studies, so we'd be okay with that if that's, you know, if that helps the neighborhood to the west, so.
Well, and I appreciate that, because obviously, truck drivers are a creature of habit, so they're going to be new starting out in this facility. So when they're starting, if we direct them the right way to go, that would not impact our neighborhood so negatively, that would be greatly appreciated. But I do, as what Eric said, too, I have a hard time approving something that says this request would not appear to have a negative impact upon traffic conditions within the surrounding area. I have a hard time approving something when I have heard that it does have a negative impact.
That's what I'm hearing, too.
I guess where I'm at is, is, you know, I recognize the staff puts in the reasons. While I might disagree with some of their reasoning, ultimately, I think we found a solution that makes sense and, you know, every accomplishment has a byproduct. And this is one of those byproducts, and as we're talking about, the largest development in 14 years, almost 15 years. It makes sense that this roadway that maybe Noel saw it happening, but, you know, who saw that, that, this type of traffic coming in and staying on Newell in particular? But making those adjustments, or at least really exploring those adjustments, I think makes sense for us to get what everybody's looking for, which is the increase in growth and the decrease in truck traffic. And if it means we start to, city engineers maybe start to bend a little bit on their desire for ankle turns and this sort of thing, but it ultimately gets us further, maybe this can be a, a good starting point.
I agree. I, I just, I, I think that development is super for that area. It fits right in with the plan, so I'm wholeheartedly in support of that. I just, also, I guess, if we could add to that, or I don't know, a friendly amendment to check into future enforcement of it on Newell also, because, like I said, I don't know if the cameras would be applicable, or, you know, if there was an embargo or the potential embargoing trucks on Newell. I don't, I don't know any of those possibilities, but the, I feel, are warranted to be explored.
And, and maybe it's, and maybe it's not necessarily appropriate to attach to this item, but I actually think that we should, we have a discussion portion of our agenda for a reason, and we should be sending communications to council that we do actually need some steps taken on a couple of things. So whether it's sidewalks, whether it's enforcement of, of truck traffic, there's an opportunity for us here to, to display some leadership, quite frankly, and, and say to council, we're hearing this constantly. We need council to, to take action, and I know that Councilman Amos would receive it well, and I'm sure others would as well, so.
Yes.
It's on the agenda, believe me.
Yep, yep.
And just, I, I wanted to let the neighbors and quite a few that have spoke have left, but we totally hear you and we get it. We're here for the planning and zoning, for the zoning of this area for this new development. We're not here to say that we want to increase truck, traffic for Newell. We don't listen to you, but we're doing a job for planning and zoning right now. So just to let you know that the council will be your next step.
That will be my next step, is seeing what we can do about that on Newell Street.
I mean, because I view this as a win-win, especially even for the neighborhood. If you have a great development, you might have people that want to live out there. You know, your house values may go up, too, so.
Are we ready for, do you want us to do a roll call?
It's up to you.
Um...
Who seconded that?
Craig.
I did. Thank you.
Okay. Well, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay. Terrible side, too. Thank you, everyone.
I am freezing.
Okay. The next agenda item will be a plat, a request by the City of Waterloo for the final plat of Waterloo Air and Rail Park First Edition, a three-lot commercial subdivision located east of 2510 Levercy Road.
Darno with staff. The applicant is requesting the final plat of Waterloo Air and Rail Park First Edition, a three-lot commercial subdivision. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on surrounding neighborhood or land use as the area is being plotted as part of the Waterloo Regional Airport in its close proximity to North Cedar Falls Industrial Park. West would not appear to have negative impact, peculiar traffic pedestrian movements in the area. The area is served by Levercy Road, which is a collector, and West Airline Highway, which is minor arterial. The area is also served by Lone Tree Road, a collector which connects to US Highway 215, a principal arterial. The area of the proposed plat is owned by M2P Plant Industrial District, has been zoned as such since the adoption of zoning ordinance number 4077 on March 13th, 1995. Surrounding land uses under, are as follows. To the north, Waterloo Regional Airport and farmland, zone M2P Plant Industrial District. To the south, Waterloo Regional Airport and farmland, zone M2P Plant Industrial District. To the east, the Waterloo Regional Airport, zone M2P Plant Industrial District. And to the west, residence and agricultural, zoned by the City of Cedar Falls, and one light industrial and A1 agricultural. There are residents built between 1930 and 1966. There is no, currently no utilities at the plat. However, utilities are going to be extended to the area to serve the development. The future land use map designates this area as industrial. The proposed plat conforms to future land use map and comprehensive plan. The applicant is requesting the final plat of Waterloo Air and Rail Park First Edition. The plat includes three lots, lots eight and nine are 3.44 acres, lot 10 being 4.74 acres. There are two tracks in the track. Track A is 1.41 acres and a right-of-way from Warp Drive. And track B is 22.11 acres, which is a permanent and temporary stormwater and management and reserves for future development. The lots will need to be numbered as 1, 2, and 3. And all buildings developed will need to meet the requirements of the Waterloo Regional Airport overlay zoning with limits to the height of the building in the area. The preliminary plat include, the final plat includes the final items. Legal description, property lines, dimensions, date, easements, right-of-way, property lot sequence, which needs to be changed, and the joining subdivisions. Building setback lines will be set during site plan review process. A dedication and engineer certificate of survey will need to be submitted before the plat is forwarded to city council. Need of dedication is being worked, created. Therefore, staff recommends that the final plat of Waterloo Air Regional, Waterloo Air and Rail Park First Edition be approved for the following reasons. The plat should not have a negative impact surrounding area. The plat should not have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. The plat will create additional infill development site in the primary growth area with the following conditions, that the plat is updated with documents that are submitted as required by staff before the request is sent to city council.
This is Anderson. I will note one thing. When this goes to council, it may be changed to lot 1, 2, and 3. Mr. Schrader says we can't do that and start with 8, 9, and 10, so. We don't argue with Mr. Schrader.
Are there any other questions for staff? Okay. Seeing no one in the audience?
I object.
We've lost our crowd.
I'd make a motion to approve the final plat for Waterloo Air and Rail First Edition with the condition that the plat is updated and additional documents are submitted as required by staff before the request is sent to city council.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carried. All right. Next is a request by XL Colt Farms for the final plat of Ottoman Heights Second Edition, located east of 1866 Red Tail Drive.
Okay. This is Heiburger with staff. XL Colt Farms is the applicant. This would be a request to create 21 lots of development of one or two single-family dwellings with lot sizes ranging from 13,460 square feet to 32,409 square feet, located east of 1866 Red Tail Drive. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on the area. The requested lots would appear to be similar of size and dimension to surrounding lots to the east, south, and west, and represents a logical extension of the surrounding housing developments. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions. Vehicles would access the lots by extending Red Tail Drive to the east till it connects to Blue Wing Drive, which connects to Partridge Drive and extending to Caris Road till it connects to Red Tail Drive. All roads are classified as local roads and sidewalks will be required for all lots. The site is owned R1 Residence District and has been since April 11th of 2016. The, the north is R4 RP Planned Multiple Residence District, Highway 20 vacant land. To the east is R1 1 and 2 Single Family District and A1 Agricultural District, Single Family Homes and Farm Ground. To the south is R1 1 and 2 Family Residence District, Single Family Homes. And to the west is R1 1 and 2 Single Family Residence and R3 Multiple Residence District, Single Family Homes and duplexes. The request would not require buffering by ordinance standards. Drainage, the lots will be required to meet residential standards for drainage. There's a 30-foot storm drainage easement located between lots 6 and 7, 30-foot drainage easement between lots 19 and 20, and 40-foot drainage easement along the rear yards of lot 1 to 10. In addition, lot A is being set aside for stormwater management as well. The 21 lots are not located within 100-year floodplain. Final plat shows 30-foot rear yard, 30-foot front yard setbacks, and 10-foot utility easement is shown in the front yard of all the proposed lots. A 50-foot sanitary sewer line easement is also shown in between lots 1 and 2. Final plat consists of 21 lots containing 11.909 acres of land, which is located south of Highway 20 and west of Blue Wing Drive and north of Dakota Drive. Lots of rain size, like I said, from, measuring from 13,460 square feet to 32,409 square feet. The average lot size for the Ottoman Hills Second Edition final plat is 19,705 square feet. Besides the lots of Ottoman Hills, Hills First Edition, final plat range from 13,498 square feet to 27,007 square feet. The average lot size is 18,000 square feet. This is comparable to the average lot size for neighboring subdivision, which include Ottoman Park Fourth Edition at 21,780 square feet, Ottoman Park Fifth Edition at 23,806 square feet, and Ottoman Park Sixth Edition at 19,166 square feet. 30-foot setback is labeled on the front rear yard of each lot, which is the minimum setback for the R1 Residence District. These items will need to be removed from the final plat and adjusted with just simply building lines. The preliminary plat was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on March 1st, 2016, at city council in August 22nd, 2016. Final plat shows setback lines, property lines with dimensions, easements, and right-of-way west data joining subdivisions, legal description of proper lot sequence. The applicant will need to submit an engineer's certificate of survey, deed of dedication, petition, and waiver documentation before the plat can go on to city council for final approval. City of Waterloo's engineering department also noted the following items need to be corrected on the final plat. Darkened property line notes, neighboring subdivisions, North Line Ottoman Hills Fifth Edition property line note, south of lot 19, has Ottoman spelled incorrectly. In addition, a closure statement will be required for the plat, and the engineering department wanted to know why there are more zeros than necessary on the, in the curve table. These are items that would, would have to obviously be derised before they go on to city council. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for final plat of Ottoman Hills Second Edition be approved for the following reasons. The plat is in accordance with subdivision ordinance. The new addition can be served by the extension of existing utilities and roads. The plat is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map, which classify this area as residential. Request would not appear to have a negative impact... Request would not appear to have any negative impact on pedestrian and the traffic conditions within the surrounding area. The final plat will create an additional infill development site in the primary growth area and subject to the following conditions, an engineer's certificate of survey, deed of dedication, petition, and waiver documentation are submitted to staff to review before this plat is submitted to City Council for final approval.
Question, question for staff.
Yes.
Question. What was the tech review concerns from engineering by Mr. Castle? Because I just have a note from the tech review and I didn't catch what his specific concerns were. It was engineering concerns that I guess Mr. Castle was the one representing, representing engineering at the time at that meeting. And I was just wondering if those concerns had been addressed.
Um, okay, tho- those concerns have, have yet to be addressed. And th- those concerns were basically what I've already stated. It was just minor things on the, on the final plat, darkened property line notes, neighboring subdivisions, the, the lone line Ottoman Park Audition property line note, south of lot 19 has ottoman spelled incorrectly. In addition, a closure statement, those were the items that Castle addressed. And, uh, uh, th- these are things that, that will need to be taken care of in the final plat before it can go on to council. But, but those were the items that were, you know, uh, they, they, they were not discussed at tech, but later discussed with engineering staff incorporated in the staff report.
Okay, so my other question was, on page 78 in the packet, it says, the preliminary plat was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on March 1st and March 1st of 2016, and, uh, the City Council on August 22nd. So this is 2019, so how come did it take three years and a little less than three years?
Supply and demand.
Okay.
Supply and demand, I call it.
They haven't had a demand for the lots out there.
Until now, okay.
Yeah, first edition, sorry, but the.
Yeah, this is just second.
Okay.
Edition.
So, yeah, that answered my question, thank you, thank you.
This is Flynn, I just wondered on this map, like, what are those? Like, they're not developed, that small area there and there?
Probably reserved for the developer's house.
See what I'm saying? Cause this shows a lot and then this is developed to, I guess that would be.
I think that isn't, I don't think that's developed yet, I think that's the preliminary.
If you go back.
That looks like it's part of fifth edition.
Yes.
First edition.
So what is this and that?
This was designated as park led, in fact, the city is, we're in the process of trying to possibly sell it, so.
And that too then?
That's privately owned.
Privately owned by the budding neighbor to the south.
Got it.
There's been kind of, yeah, final plots approved for everything around it, this is the, the last infill piece.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the request by XL Colt Farms LLC for the 21 lot final plat of Ottoman Hills Second Edition, zone R1, our, zone R1, one and two family residence district and located east of 1866 Red Tail Drive. Based on the, uh, the reasons in the staff recommendation report and, uh, subject to the following conditions, an engineer's certificate of survey, deed of dedication, and petition of waiver documentation are submitted to staff to review before the plat is submitted to City Council for final approval. And that the, uh, engineer Castle's, uh, issues are followed up on, uh, that are outlined in the staff analysis subdivision ordinance paragraph of this, uh, of this report.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Next is a request by the City of Waterloo to vacate a portion of Bluff Street from West Sixth Street to West Seventh Street.
This is Schrader with staff, the proposed vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on the area or traffic conditions in the area. There is sewer lines, both sanitary and storm sewer in the area to be vacated. So an easement will need to be retained over the entire portion to be vacated. The role of Bluff was greatly diminished with the construction of US Highway 218 as an expressway in the 90s. All buildings on the southwest side of Bluff were demolished for the highway construction. And the buildings on the north side of Bluff abut up to the right-of-way area, but have, uh, this area has been used for parking due to the new Highway 218 frontage road system. Several sections of the street have already been vacated in the area, including the section between Seventh and, uh, West Seventh and West Eighth immediately to the southeast of the requested area. That was back in 1987. There would be no plating required with this. Therefore, staff recommends that the request to vacate this portion of Bluff be approved as the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area or traffic conditions. And the request to vacate would help for the redevelopment of the abutting site and subject to a condition that an easement be retained over the entire area to be vacated.
Any questions for staff?
What type of easement would that, this is Charles, what type of easement would that be then, just a utility?
Just a utility easement that would allow for the existing utilities. The area could still be developed as a parking lot, uh, but over top of that easement.
Thank you.
And there's no railroad in that area, is it, that, that's more farther out on Seventh?
It's, it's.
It's further east.
Right there, actually on the one map. It's just on the right-hand side where the railroad comes. Yeah, it's on the page 88 aerial, it's like, you can see part of the railroad right of way, but not the actual railroad tracks.
The railroad turns the east of this site just to get across the river, it looks like.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to note that was a really good staff report.
Apparently Mr. Anderson wrote it.
I'll make a motion to approve the vacate requests by the City of Waterloo for 16,500 square feet of Bluff Street, uh, right-of-way located between West Sixth and West Seventh Street, uh, with the condition that an easement be retained over the entire portion to be vacated.
Someone, a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Your brain's getting cold.
Next is a request by the City of Waterloo to vacate right-of-way and a drainage easement located near the intersection of Martin Luther King Jr. Drive and Idaho Street.
Okay, this is Heiburger with the staff report, um, I'm going to be extremely brief. This is the exact same area of the site plan amendment for the Dollar General. This is just simply, uh, vacating, uh, that area. And it's just basically old former MLK right-of-way that, you know, later became the Dollar General project. So basically, yeah, the, the applicant is, uh, requesting to vacate as Dollar General or DGOG Waterloo 10032208 LLC. And basically, they're, they're requesting to vacate the drainage easement and right-of-way to allow for redevelopment of the site as a Dollar General. The, uh, I'll just skip to the end. Uh, the, the request to vacate 1.47 acre drainage easement and city right-of-way would not appear to have a negative impact on the neighborhood or traffic conditions in the area. Uh, the section of drainage easement and right-of-way proposed to be vacated is no longer needed for public purposes, drainage or transportation purposes. The area is simply excess right-of-way that was acquired for the construction of Martin Luther King Jr. Drive and is adjacent to a tributary of Blowers Creek. Vacated area will provide for the redevelopment of the site as a new Dollar General store. Therefore, staff recommends the request to vacate 1.47 acre drainage easement and city right-of-way be approved for the following reasons. Request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. Request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. Three, the right-of-way is not needed for transportation or drainage purposes. And four, the request would bring new economic development opportunities to the area, and that's Heiburger with the staff report.
Okay, I do have a couple of questions, this is, uh, do not. Now, um, on the floodplain where it says the eastern side of the proposed parcel is located within the 500-year and the 100-year floodplain, and then it goes down here, down farther on page 92, it says, um, is adjacent to the tributary of Blowers, Blowers Creek. Does that present any flood, flooding concerns at all for the do, for the proposed site, for the Dollar General site?
Um, I'm not believe it'll have, uh, any impacts on drainage in the area. And also stated like in the previous staff report, where the Dollar General is going, um, is, is, uh, none of it's in the 100-year floodplain.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the request by DGOG Waterloo Iowa 10032018 LLC Dollar General to vacate a 1.47 acre drainage easement and city right-of-way located northeast of Idaho Street and Martin Luther King Jr. Drive with the, um, recommendations from staff that the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the fa, surrounding area. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular pedestrian traffic in this area. The right-of-way is not needed for transportation or drainage purposes. The request would bring new economic development to the area.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next is the request by the City of Waterloo to nominate the Walnut Ridge Neighborhood to the National Register of Historic Places.
I have a question. Do I need to abstain from this discussion since I live in the neighborhood?
You're, you're not in the part that's being nominated, so you're fine.
But I also participate in the Walnut, Walnut Neighborhood Association, so I would.
I think you're okay.
Yeah.
I think you're okay.
Okay.
Anderson with staff, you should be fine, because you wouldn't have any, um, direct monetary benefit from the nomination.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So, the 2017, the state signed a development agreement between the Walnut Neighborhood Association, JSA Development, and Hefter Humanity to begin a multifaceted project to revive the Walnut Neighborhood. At one part was an agreement, was an attempt to get the neighborhood on the National Register of Historic Places. The State Nominations Review Committee will, um, consider the nomination on June 14th, 2019. In order to be nominated, um, the building location must, um, a packet must be filed. It must be approved by this, um, Historic Preservation Commission, which it was on April 16th, 2019. Then goes the Planning Commission to, um, Public Hearing City Council, which will happen on May 20th before going to Review Committee on June 14th, then goes to the federal government. So you can see the map where, um, it's kind of, they basically tried to avoid areas with newer buildings or, buildings who were, were more related to downtown than to, um, Walnut. So that's why the lines are kind of drawn the way they are. So, any questions?
This is Flynn, my question is though, if this is on the National Registry, I just know from the district, we're, we're going through this with the, um, Home Next to Orange, that it's on the registry. For removal of dilapidated buildings or in, futuristically, it would not be possible if they're in this?
Only if, um, they're individually eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. That building at Orange is eligible for the National Register, so then it gets reviewed by the Historic Commission.
So any house in this neighborhood would have that same?
Yeah.
Probability?
This is Anderson with staff, possibly, so when they do a, a review of this, there's usually, and I, I think they call it different numbers, I'm going to use the easier ones, A, B, and C. So an A is individually eligible, a B is a contributing to the district. And then C, there'll be some that are not contributing to the district. But, but they're still there. Um, and so it's not to say that, that there couldn't be some difficulty, but they would, they would be easier for demolition if they were in a dilapidated state, if they were a C versus an A or a B.
Because in this neighborhood, are there properties that might fall in a C category?
There definitely will be.
Yes, yeah, there is.
Breakout of those if you'd like to see.
Yeah, that would be just, and so then they still do to have to go through the board to?
So the, the National Register listing, and, and John can jump in if I don't get this exactly right, but the National Register listing is basically making them eligible for federal and state tax credits and other programs to help them for rehabilitation. The actual design review would be a local nomination, which is a different step than what we're taking today. If they wanted that, like the Highland District has, we could go ahead and do that under the ordinance, but that is not a necessity to be on the National Register.
Okay, so this, if someone wanted to side their home, like in Highland, you could still do?
Correct.
At this point, okay, gotcha.
And if it's, to be locally nominated, they would have to get 51% of the property owners to approve of it, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve the request by the City of Waterloo to nominate the Walnut Neighborhood to the National Registry of Historic Places, um, with the following reasons. The proposed designation would help preserve a historic district. It will support the revitalization of the Walnut Neighborhood, and it will support the continued growth of the adjacent downtown area.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any other discussion items?
I would just add that, that I really would like to see us do at least a, a briefing on what complete streets is, uh, where they're at in that, in that, uh, development of the plan, just so that we at least have some sort of idea of, of where this thing is heading.
The infill, yeah.
What is the procedure on the infill? So if it's with the advisory committee now, then where does it go next? Is that City Council?
Yeah, or it could come back here and then go to council. I'm not sure how they're going to want to do that, but we can definitely have something come here for an update.
Thank you.
Tavis, what was that other item that somebody mentioned? We were talking about the sidewalk infill, and then somebody said, um, in talking about putting in, in the discussion area, they listed off a second item that they wanted to discuss, but it was.
Uh, it was about the, uh, about newell.
Yeah.
Okay.
And truck traffic.
Okay.
Enforcement embargo.
Enforcement embargo.
Thank you.
Is it within the, is it within the abilities of this group to sort of make recommendations to council?
Uh, definitely, definitely, you could have discussion items that we would forward to council for them to be aware of.
What would be, what's the process of getting those discussion items on the agenda? Typically, would you sort of rely on staff to?
Yes, yeah, just contact staff, John would be the main contact person to, to put on the council agenda, or the commission agenda.
Is that something that we are allowed as commissioners to discuss, like, informally outside of this process? If we decide that we want to collectively make that, or is that something that we just need to do individually?
Um, if it's not on the agenda yet, yeah, so then you could discuss it, um, I would.
On our agenda.
I would make sure that you don't have a quorum present.
Okay.
And then when we would actually discuss it here, um, you would want to note that, you know, if, if three of you met and talked about it ahead of the meeting or something, you'd want to note that you did meet and talk about it ahead of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And just one quick question, why, why are we standing with that park out on, uh, Fourth and Hoff or by, uh, the opposite side of Ottoman? That park that they're, um.
Oh Prairie Grove.
Potentially proposing to make into housing?
Fourth and Chalice.
Chalice, I couldn't.
So that was at a work session, um, about three weeks ago, I think, so was that Ottoman lot that was discussed a little bit earlier. Um, there was actually five different properties that was on that work session. We could forward those out to the commission if you'd like to see them. Um, basically, as staff, we were asked to look at all city properties and if there's any excess property. Our goal is not to sell off any parks in whole. We are looking at the function of all city lands, including parks, and is there sections of the parks that are not being used for park purposes that could be sold off for infill housing as well as the park continuing to function in a high manner?
Thank you.
Is it possible to get P and Z snuggies? Cause it is freezing.
Like if this is going to be a thing.
We, we thought that would, we thought that would make you go through the agenda faster.
You guys are really trying.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.